Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm ready. I apologize.
Great. Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the March 21st meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Happy Equinox. And please have a roll call vote for us or a roll call.
Roll call. Thank you. Supervisor Madron.
Present.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Good morning.
Supervisor Bound. Sorry. Supervisor Wilson.
Aki.
Supervisor Royal. Here. Thank you.
Please join us for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Great. Thank you very much. So CAO Hayes, is there any modifications to the agenda?
Good morning, Chairman Madron. There is one modification. Item D six will be pulled for discussion.
Okay. Great. And that's it at this time? All right. We've got a very large consent agenda, and I know we have a number of proclamations and certificates and other things we want to present. So I think we'll go through that first, and then we'll do public comment. That'll be a smoother way to proceed with that. So I'll go to my fellow board members. Do you have anything you would like to read into the record?
Have you read this?
Yeah. We're going to do these now, and then we'll go to public comment. You can go ahead and go first if you'd like. Well, I'll just go ahead and call on you.
Okay. We have a proclamation from the Board of Supervisors for our DHHS, our social workers. Do we have any here besides Connie?
A whole bunch.
Come on up here, kids.
Kids.
I'm going to read it. I'm going to talk to you. I'm going to talk about you. I want to talk to you.
Hey. I'll let you guys speak afterwards, after I say all the good things about you guys.
Whereas social work was developed from a common concern for humanity and the belief in the dignity and worth of each individual with a commitment to promoting the welfare of all individuals, served in the dedication of working to promote social justice, equity, and inclusion. Whereas social work provides a significant role. See Ryan? Ryan started crying the minute I started talking. What's with that? Whereas social work provides a significant role in the system of services aimed at protecting children, the frail, elderly, and other dependent adults from neglect, abuse, and exploitation, and assisting families and individuals struggling with issues such as mental health or substance abuse. Whereas social workers help find and support alternative care, foster relative or nonrelated extended family members for neglected and abused children when needed, as all have the right to a safe environment. Whereas social workers help provide care and support through care providers to enable elders and people with disabilities to remain in their homes and communities, and help provide continued support to veterans and their families to ensure successful transitions after service. Whereas social workers, in collaboration with public health, behavioral health, educational institutions, medical professionals, and many other community agencies, work to make Humboldt County a nurturing, supportive, healthy environment for children, families, adults, and communities. Whereas social workers have continued to fill the critical roles during adverse events which have impacted them, their clients, and community as a whole. Whereas social workers provide valuable services to increase opportunities for all members of society and to speak out on behalf of the vulnerable and the voiceless. Whereas social workers in Humboldt County are a major force for positive community change, recognizing the strength of individuals, families, and communities, and understanding that empowering people requires acknowledgement and their capabilities. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim March 2023 Social Worker Appreciation Month, should be every month, and honor social workers for all they do to enhance the well-being of individuals, families, and the communities within our county, and encourage support of programs which benefit the health and welfare of all citizens. I move the proclamation.
Okay.
Oh, Connie's asking if I want to go first, so I get to. I can't say no if Connie asks me if I want to go first, even though I don't really want to. So I'm Carrie Shrock. I manage adult services, our Veteran Service Office, In-Home Supportive Services, and Adult Protective Services. So thank you for the proclamation. I just want, I'm a social worker by education, and I'm really happy to be here. I'm really proud of the staff that works with elderly and dependent adults. In IHSS, the staff helps keep people safely in their homes, able to avoid being placed out of the home by having care providers come in and help assist, assist people who need a little bit of extra care to stay at home. And Adult Protective Services works really hard with elders and dependent adults to make sure that they are safe while honoring their right to make their own decisions about their lives. Social workers throughout the pandemic, my staff didn't really have the, the ability to not do their jobs. They went out even, even during the height of the pandemic with having to balance taking care of their own families, trying to keep themselves safe, being worried about going out in the field and not exposing kind of the most vulnerable people in the community to the pandemic or other things. So I'm just really proud of my staff. I'm really happy that I get to work with such wonderful people. We have a really good support system at the office, including all of our clerical and supportive staff that kind of help us able to do all of our jobs. So hopefully, if issues come up about my programs or my staff, that, that you just remember what a great job they do every day, and I do. Second, what Rex said about every month should be Social Worker Month, so. Okay. Who's next?
Well, not me. All right, Doc. Good morning. My name is Eric Koenig. I'm a program manager with DHHS, and I just want to share the appreciation for our social workers. I do a lot of integrated services where different branches come together to provide services to our community, and I couldn't be prouder of the work that our social work team does. I just want to echo what Supervisor Bone said in the proclamation. I couldn't add anything more to that. It is beautiful, and I want to thank our team. So thank you very much, social workers.
Good morning. Assistant Director for Health and Human Services, Michelle Stevens. I too am a social worker, two-time graduate from HSU. I am one of many social workers in DHHS that play different roles, lots of different hats, and I appreciate the opportunities that I've had in my career as a social worker and getting a master's degree in social work. There's a plug for that for everybody out there. And working for the county is pretty great, actually, I would say. It's when I was, before I went to graduate school, I was a social worker, and I was making $15 an hour, and I wanted to make more after having a graduate degree, and the county was where to go. And I spent 10 years in child welfare, and I never knew that I would. And here I am. So I love my job, and I love being a social worker, and I appreciate everybody out there that is a social worker in DHHS and outside DHHS. Thanks.
Connie Beck, Health and Human Services Director. Thank you for this appreciation to all of our social workers. I guess the only thing that I would add is we are at a staffing crisis level right now in our social worker programs, especially child welfare. We, I'm, I'm looking strategically at all things that we can do around wellness and, and prevention of burnout, so folks don't leave. There's many, many social worker positions now within the community. There's social workers in education and public defender and other areas, and we need to somehow make folks know how important and how, how much we appreciate the work that they do. The secondary trauma that social workers experience in our programs is real, and, and we need to, we need to do all we can to support them. So thank you very much for this proclamation.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can I say my comments from up here? I like this view. Yep. You've got two to read, right? Well, what about D eight, also letters of appreciation? First five. All right. Fantastic. Okay. Now we'll go to Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. I'm going to read a proclamation for Women's History Month. Whereas women of every culture and ethnic, ethnic background have made history, historic contributions to the growth and strength of Humboldt County women in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas local women have furthered the cause of freedom through a variety of means and seek a fair and just society for all while continuing to work for peace around the world. Whereas the history of Humboldt County women is an expansive story of outstanding individuals who sacrificed much, much, and worked hard in pursuit of a better world. Where peace, dignity, and opportunity can reign, such as the work of Sarah Johnson, the first woman lighthouse keeper in California, right here on the Samoa Peninsula. And whereas women of Humboldt continue to be particularly important in the establishment of charitable, charitable, philanthropic, and cultural, cultural institutions, and whereas women have shaped our community by shouldering the care and nurturing of families, by furthering equality and administering justice in every corner of our community through volunteerism in schoolrooms, boardrooms, courtrooms, environmental organizations, and more. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of women in history has been repeatedly overlooked and often undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors here declares that March 2023 is designated as Women's History Month in Humboldt County, and encourages all residents to learn more about these important, important contributions and to celebrate the legacies of all women everywhere. And I would also like to recognize, I got to find it. I'm sorry.
Well, let's do a round of applause for that one first.
Thank you. I'm getting my agenda back up.
And eventually, it's going to be called herstory, not history, right?
Letters of appreciation for the members who, oh, no. Letter of appreciation to Cheryl Lyons, Veronica Megerson, and Stephanie Weldon for their service to the, on the Humboldt First Five Commission Board. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And let's applaud those folks, too. You know, as board members here, we take on different appointments at the beginning of every year, and we always have to do a little arm wrestling for who's going to represent First Five. We all love working with that organization, and these are three incredible folks that have spent a lot of time helping with all the great work that that commission does. So thank you, Supervisor Bushnell.
I currently serve on that commission, and it's probably my most, one of my most enjoyable. And, and Mary Ann, their executive director, is just an amazing person, as is all the staff. So I really enjoy what First Five brings to Humboldt County.
Great. Thank you very much. And we have just two more. And the first one is March 2023 is Red Cross Month in Humboldt County, and boy, have they been busy, like all of us, right? One disaster after another for the last several months, and Red Cross is always there, you know, helping folks with housing and other emergency services. So with that, I believe, is Karen Suker here today in the audience? Karen, are you here? No? Okay. So we'll get this to, to Karen or another representative. So whereas the American Red Cross has been performing vital work throughout the nation for more than 140 years, and whereas it holds as its mission and prevention and alleviation of human suffering in the face of emergencies by mobilizing the power of volunteers and the generosity of donors, and whereas the International Red Cross unites 192 nations and nearly 14 million volunteers as the world's largest humanitarian aid organization, and whereas the American Red Cross and its local chapters respond to a full array of disasters, including earthquakes, floods, massive storms, wildfires, snow, and snow, and snow, and more, whereas the Humboldt, Del Norte, and Trinity County territory of the American Red Cross fields more than 80 volunteers to assist in emergency preparation, disaster aid, and logistical support at a local level. Therefore, be it resolved that March 2023 be recognized as Red Cross Month in honor of the support of this organization's locally, regionally, and nationally, nationally, and of its volunteers. So how about a big round of applause for Red Cross and all the incredible work they do? And if you have the time and interest, please volunteer, contact them. They are always looking for more volunteers to help with their incredible work. So we thank them for that. Yes, Michelle Bushnell, Supervisor Bushnell.
Michelle's fine. Thank you. I just really want to say what an impact my district had with the Red Cross being active during the earthquakes in Riedel, and now currently with the, the snow and water damages that have happened in Southern Humboldt. We have a Red Cross shelter open right now in Miranda due to a landslide in the Phillipsville area, and so we have people housed there. Also, countless volunteers and hours during the earthquake in Riedel for people that had to move out of their homes, and I just really thank all the volunteers and the Red Cross and all they do for our county and for everyone.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. And next, we have letters of appreciation for, to the members who served on the Housing Trust Fund and Homelessness Solutions Committee. This was an amazing group of individuals that spent the last five years trying to work on very complicated problems, and we have dissolved that committee, but it's because things have changed in the landscape, and there are still multiple opportunities for engagement, and we're trying to simplify and focus our efforts. But we really wanted to thank them. There have been a number of members that have been thanked previously, like Johnny Cawkins and others that have not been on the committee for the last year. So this is primarily those members that were on the committee over the last year. I want to thank Nezze Wade from AHA and their incredible work. We've got, next on the list is Patty Ray from Southern Humboldt, incredible volunteer working to find solutions down there in the Southern Humboldt area. And then we have Darlene Spoor, who is the head of the Arcata House Partnership, and all the work they're doing over there in Arcata and North County areas. And we have Tony Gerard, who works for a church in McKinnonville, the Church Joyful Healer, and they provided a lot of amazing services in the McKinnonville area as well. And we have Lynn Martinez, who was the chair of this committee for the last year and a half, two years, I believe it was, and really helped keep things rolling along in that way. And next, we have Michelle Nielsen, who worked for the county and provided staff to this, this committee with one of the longest names of any of our committees in the county. And also, we have Sally Hewitt, who used to work for the county and has put in years and years of service and helped us with this committee as well. And we have Janelle Egger, who also has been a fearless advocate for homeless, homeless services. And then we have Mark Delaney, also a long-term member of the committee and working on a lot of different kind of tiny, tiny house solutions all over the county. And last but not least, we have Robert Ward, who also works for the county and really helped keep us all together, working on these projects and processes, and kept the administrative part of everything going for us. So again, let's all give a round of applause for all these incredible volunteers. So a nice thing to start Equinox out, spring, right? Happy spring, springing forward with all these incredible volunteer organizations and volunteers in our community. And you, too, can be one of those volunteers, and I know many of you already are. So thank you for your work. I think, you know, we're all social workers at one point or another, and lately with the disasters, I think that's what we're finding, that it's up to us to keep an eye on our neighbors, our seniors, and really try and help us all get through all these tough times. So with that, I'll bring it back to the board to see if there's any additional comments, and then we'll go to public comment.
I just want to recognize that our board meeting for next week, next Tuesday, is canceled. So just mark that off.
Yep. It may have been on the calendar, but it is no longer. Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you. That was quite a bevy of proclamations and recognitions, and I do just want to acknowledge how hard folks, particularly that we're recognizing today, have worked to get us back to, I know we're, we're not in a place where we are in a normal phase again, but it's been especially challenging the last few years to combat the sense of isolation and worry and some of the very dire impacts we've experienced within families and within our community. So extra special thanks to those who have worked through all of that and found ways to make it possible to continue providing critically important services to our community.
Supervisor Wilson.
You guys have heard me say this before, but I'll just say it again. In the, in terms of the fabric of this society, there's frayed edges to it all, and even frayed innards of it. And I want to say that, you know, the social workers are the ones that are mending those frayed ends and putting them all back together, even as we wear and put wear and tear on that fabric all the time or as it just happens. I mean, you know, local government and through, and, and through the work of our social workers is just, you know, holding civil society together, and it gets sometimes harder and harder, and, and we celebrate our, our triumphs, and we work hard to, to, to kind of, again, just keep it together. And I, and I really appreciate the community that's been created through our social workers. On that, I want to say that it kind of ties into, you know, the proclamation with the relationship to, to women. I want to kind of put a special kind of pin or shout out to the network of native women that I've worked with in the past, especially around healthcare, and, and how dynamic and, and how just those networks that I've witnessed have been just absolutely crucial to, to a huge portion of, of our community. And, and that work actually expands outward from, from the native community and has, has provided real benefit to everybody. And then First Five, you're right. That is the, I used to tell you, like, when I was on First Five, even though you'd make hard decisions in, in that space, I just can't, as a group of folks, again, mostly women in that organization, it was always a joy with, I always felt good about walking into that room and when I walked out of that room in those meetings. So that's all I have for today.
Thank you. Okay. And with that, we'll go to public comment, and do we have any hands up in the Zoom? Go ahead, Supervisor Bone.
I'm still here. Yeah, I, I really appreciate being able to read. I don't know, I'd like everybody to reread the social workers proclamation because they touch everything. Law enforcement, I see Sean Brennerman here, they did, I mean, all the way. I mean, Carrie, what she does with, you know, protecting so many of our agents, so many of our people. And, and I read that, and I, I know Mike likes to talk about the frayed edges and repeatedly. But the part I like about the social workers is the work you do to stop the edges from getting frayed in the first place. You, you hit it off before it ever happens, and I appreciate that. So you get both ends of the spectrum. You get where it's frayed, but you stop it from being frayed, and I appreciate that. So, and First Five, yeah, I got served on that for three years, and I, and it, it is a lot, it is a lot of fun. I never had the hard decisions. They were always good decisions because they always involved kids, and I've always, you know, from day one, I've said I look at everything through a kid's view because that's kind of where I'm at. So good stuff. So anyway, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. And we're going to start out with those in the Zoom. We've got two hands up, and then we'll go to the public here today. So we've got 5288. This is your opportunity to speak, and you know the drill. There you go. Star, star six in three minutes.
Here we go. My phone worked. My cell doesn't work, and that's the one that cuts you out of me. Okay. It's 9:26, and we're getting through consent by 9:30. That's good. I did want to make mention on item number 23 on consent. I strongly support the continued government-to-government working with the tribes there in the child welfare system. I could be wrong, but I thought I saw another lawsuit being filed. I hope that I misunderstood that one because I think we're all trying to make an effort and do that one well. I did want to make a comment on also item number 24. It's regarding permission to work on the encampments in the right-of-way, the state, the state right-of-ways for roads here on Highway 101 quarter. I wish that you would also include all of the state highways, including 299. Recently, out here in Blue Lake on the off, on-ramp, right as you're coming into Blue Lake, there was a person there, and, and I went, and she had a dog running around, so I dropped her off a little dog food and shared half of my dinner with her, but then she kind of abandoned that camp, and, and he left. I didn't see her around after a while, and I was there for quite a while. One of our local people got ahold of Sheriff Billy, and a shout out and thank you for Sheriff Billy coming out and enabling this to be dealt with in, in a, in a proper manner. I am a little bit, well, I just say not happy that the same person tried to get our city manager, Mandy Mager, to work on this and allegedly was not cooperative on this particular topic, and I hope that won't happen again. And I think I will be trying to work with Mandy. I didn't have time to get ahold of her and get her perspective. But we also need permission, I think, to deal with this because these homeless encampments are not just on one highway. They will be growing rather rapidly, in my opinion, on other highways. Might as well get permission now to deal with those, and also to help the people, you know, that need the help. This lady obviously had some issues, and I hope when she abandoned her camp there that it wasn't of a really negative experience for her. I did want to thank you also for formalizing, canceling the meeting of March 28. You know, that was an action taken during the Action Summit. I think that was item number 13, 10D, and it appeared that you were tagging on something there, but to take the formal action now of doing that, and now we officially know that it has been canceled. And I, you know, I appreciate you folks canceling meetings to take care of good work. Make as many as you can. We're going to need to have meetings. This one looks like it'll be a quick one. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on your consent item, and it is now 9:29.
Thank you, commenter. And next, we have zero one three zero, no, five zero, zero one five zero. Star six to unmute. There you go. You've got three minutes.
This is, okay, thank you. This is Patty Russell from Southern Humboldt. In light of the situation with so many things pertaining to housing and pertaining to care of people in our community and the social work in the Red Cross, I just want to say that it's, and it's such an incredibly hard job. I don't think anybody could ever understate what an incredibly, incredibly hard job it is, and I personally want to say thank you to the people that really reach out and, and really care, because there are a lot of people in, in home supportive services, all kinds of social work. Really, everybody in this county is a social worker, and for the people that decide to do that every minute of every day, it's amazing. Mark Lammers' name wasn't mentioned, Leah Nagy from NAMM wasn't mentioned, Kim is doing an amazing job in Eureka, and my nephew, Peter, was found deceased at the bus stop in the middle of, we, hours in the morning only a few weeks ago, and he was Native American, part Native American. He was born in Two Towns when he was born early and had a really rough life, and Mark adored him. The coroner knew him from church, and, you know, so many people knew him and loved him, and the bus driver that knew him for over 10 years was the one that found him and had to call about it. So these people, everybody that's working to try to make a difference, are so deeply touched, and I don't know, I, I mean, all I can say is thank you for doing your best and caring, and I don't know if you ever do anything about when there's really a terrible situation like what happened at the bus. And the bus driver that knew him for over 10 years was the one that found him and had to call about it. So these people, everybody that's working to try to make a difference, are so deeply touched. And I don't know. I mean, all I can say is thank you for doing your best and caring. And I don't know if you ever do anything about when there's really a terrible situation like what happened at the bus stop that you give people extra hours or do something to, you know, or have them talk to somebody. It's really rough to find somebody that you know and love deceased at a bus stop. Yeah, so the Red Cross has set up something for people that are in the houses and the little motel that we own in Phillipsville. And they're amazing and wonderful and terrific. And they have all the things that they need. So they're amazing. I hope we can do that amazing for some of our homeless people too and for the social workers that are suffering from things that they have to see every day. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't see any other hands up in Zoom, so we'll go to those here in the audience today. Please come forward and let us know which item on the consent agenda you wanted to speak on. And you've got three minutes. Welcome.
I am Steve Davis with District Five, living places and additional places like the club at Mill Creek where I can get a good cleansing contrast shower and have added the extra efforts of exercise and swimming to balance my needs as a diabetic. Thank you Chair Supervisor Steve Madrone, Vice Chair Supervisor Rex Bone, our Supervisor Michelle Bushnell, Supervisor Mike Wilson, Supervisor Natalie Arroyo, our John Ford, your director, and everyone here for supporting our social workers who have improved our Humboldt County along with the American Red Cross and Pay It Forward Humboldt, being there for Riodell people who knows how soon they'll be back in their houses again. I am still very concerned about the houseless, the people that may be on the cold, hard sidewalks of our Humboldt County, how best we can work together along with the good news that the Life House people in Eureka are opening up their place of faith for as a warm, dry shelter, hoping more and so more people will provide the extra places for our students, for our seniors, for our traveling nurses, for our doctors, for everyone to have an acceptable place, to have their clean clothes, their healthy food, and a best sleeping and resting place that we all can work together as the great history of Humboldt County well expresses in the photographs and stories we have. So everyone together, working on this must-have affordable and available places and spaces for people to stay. Thank you for collaborating with everyone on aging and the generous opportunities to develop the lands that we have. Thank you for a best day yet in our Humboldt County. God bless America and everyone.
Thank you, Steve. And I assume you were speaking on the social workers' part as well as Red Cross and other things. Thank you for your comments. Please, welcome. You've got three minutes.
Thanks. Good morning Chair and Board of Supervisors. My name is Jessica Osborne Staffness and I'm the Chief Operating Officer for the North Coast Health Improvement and Information Network. Speaking on item 18 of the consent agenda, just wanted to briefly express our thanks to the Board of Supervisors and DHHS for being really kind of critical partners in this project. I was fortunate to bump into a colleague today in the waiting room I didn't expect to see here and was reminded of a conversation she and I had about six years ago about being in the space of imagination together. And I was thinking about how that relates to this Community Information Exchange contract. You know, the Community Information Exchange really is about bringing partners together across sectors to improve health outcomes for our community, to, you know, work better together, to make sure that people can get the services that they need and not be lost to care. But it takes a really long time to bring it to fruition. And I especially want to thank DHHS for being a partner from the beginning, and I mean six years ago, in our journey towards this and sort of holding that imagination space with us along with many other community partners. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Very much appreciate you coming forward and speaking to that. There are so many wonderful things in this packed consent agenda here today. So thank you for putting a little spotlight on the good work that you're doing with DHHS. Appreciate it. So no others here in the audience today wishing to speak on the consent agenda. I just want to make one final comment, and that is I want to thank Hoopa Valley Tribes staff and council and our DHHS staff for all their hard work in the government-to-government work they're doing to make sure that we're doing our best for safety and welfare of the children. And it's been an incredible effort out there. We're getting ready to open up a new facility. And Director Beck, I want to thank you in particular for your hard work and your staff in helping to make that happen. So thank you. I just wanted to highlight that one as well. And with that, I believe we've reached a point for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Bushnell and second by Supervisor Arroyo. And we'll go ahead. I believe our voting tabs are up. So we'll go ahead and use that wonderful system here. If we can all navigate to there. Am I the only one with it not up?
I think so.
Mine's open. I don't know why it's not showing.
You might need to restart it.
Yeah, well, we'll go ahead and do roll call vote for now.
Okay Supervisor Bone? Say it. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Hi.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Madrone?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 50.
Fantastic. Okay. And with that, we're going to go to items pulled from consent. And we have D6 Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. I think we have some land surveyors here in the audience. If you guys could come up.
All right.
I'm going to read the proclamation and then I think they're going to talk a little bit. So National Surveyors Week in the county of Humboldt, whereas land surveying has been a rich part of our history and an important piece in the development of Humboldt County and the United States. And whereas some of the most famous land surveyors include George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, Daniel Boone, Abraham Lincoln and Benjamin Benker, a free ex-slave who became part of the crew that surveyed the original borders of Washington, DC. And whereas land surveyors use specialized equipment to measure and mark property boundaries, calculating the dimensions, elevations, shapes and contours of sites for public, government and private development. And where land surveyors, whereas land surveyors must conduct surveys and perform mathematical calculations with a high level of accuracy. And a land surveyor's role involves examining historical property records and maps to determine legal boundaries of a specific piece of land. And whereas the Humboldt chapter of the California Land Surveyors Association has been instrumental in identifying and preserving historical land boundaries through monument preservation surveys and obtaining private collections of historic maps and survey records. And whereas the Humboldt County Surveyor has been awarded Surveyor of the Year by the County Engineers Association of California for the work on the County Surveyors Library, online map index, mapping standards and monument preservation. And whereas the Humboldt County Surveyor's Office strives to provide superior customer service to county departments, the land development community and the general public, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors, that the Board of Supervisors of the county of Humboldt proclaim the week of March 19th through March 25th as National Surveyors Week in the county of Humboldt. You guys want to tell us a little bit about land surveying?
Good morning Supervisors. Bob Rockel, I'm your county surveyor. Thank you for acknowledging and celebrating the surveying profession. It is one of the oldest professions in the United States. And it's also one of the professions that's also undergoing a tremendous labor shortage, much like other professions in the United States are. And through actions like this and other programs such as CLSA's TrigStar program helps educate and encourages today's youth to enter this noble profession that is really just a wonderful profession to be involved with. My concluding words on this is just to kind of touch on the true need for surveyors. Right now, there are roughly 12,000 people who have a license in the state of California to practice surveying, of which roughly 8,000 of those licenses were issued back in 1982. And assuming that those people were 25 years old at the time they were licensed, that means that we have a pool of roughly 8,000 surveyors that are 67 and older. And that leaves a balance of roughly 4,000 surveyors today to go ahead and do all the work that needs to be done. And with that, you could see that there is a shortage compared to times past. And to put it in perspective, from 82 to present, we've got roughly 4,000 active surveyors, civil engineers, it's about 51,000. So there is just a tremendous difference in the number of professions.
Good morning Supervisors. Thank you so much for adopting the proclamation for National Surveyors Week. As you know, you've seen us before Board of Supervisors meeting, Planning Commission meetings. We just reiterate that, you know, we're here to protect the public, serve the public, protect property boundaries and people's rights within their private property. And again, just to echo what Bob said, whatever we can do to encourage other young people to enter the survey profession, perhaps, you know, returning military personnel, we need land surveyors and there's not really clear career paths for land surveyors. So we need to encourage as many as people as possible to consider this so that we can continue developing the infrastructure and basically the facilities that we need to function as a society at large. So thanks again for taking the time for us this morning.
So Bob, could you, I just, the Surveyors Library that's over at the Public Works, I hadn't had an opportunity to see that and I was able to a couple of months or six months ago. And it's pretty amazing. Can you just tell us a little bit about that?
The County Surveyors Library, we were recently able to expand into the space that was formerly occupied by the Elections Office before they moved across town. And with that, through the donations of materials and time, through Mike O'Hern, he crafted shelving to house many of the historic field books that were there. It created the space where we could display historical artifacts related to the surveying profession. And in addition, we also have space in there to go ahead and house the collections of unrecorded survey documents that have been bequeathed to the county over time as surveyors have retired. And why this information is important is by law, certain survey work must be filed with the county surveyor. The balance of the work that they do, there's no obligation for those records to be filed with the county surveyor. And without someone to possess these records, they may get thrown away or discarded and they provide a valuable research tool for the surveying community in being able to go ahead and trace out some more of the complex and difficult surveys. And it's not unusual to see surveyors down there on a weekly basis going through the archives to find this information, to find additional clues that could help them with the survey that they're working on. The County Surveyors Office and CLSA are partnering to figure out a way to jointly manage this pool of records. And I hope that later this year I'll be able to have an agenda item back before you with respect to the collections. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Great. How about a little applause for the surveyors? We wouldn't be able to find our way without them, right? So with that, we'll go to public comment. And I see there is one hand up in the Zoom and that is 5288. You've got three minutes.
Ken Swawski, yes. Michael Polley points west surveying. You are so important that Chair Madrone skipped items E and F to get to you before you made your comments. So you're more important than public comment and non-agendized items and special presentations. Michael Polley is my go-to surveyor, points west there, and I've had great luck. I think, Michael, it must have been six, eight years ago, we did surveys on my properties, which I've been trying to get in the system, tiny home building, there's a whole bunch of things. Maybe I'll be coming back to you. Surveyors are very important in everything we do. Possibly Humboldt Polytechnic would maybe consider filling the gap we're going to have very soon as far as all of the surveyors that are pretty long on the tooth there. And of course, Mike O'Hern and those kind of people I've dealt with in the past. It's necessary. And for young people out there, I hope the schools will counsel and direct people toward that. It's a great profession. It's obviously needed. Will always be needed as far as I can tell as long as the human race has a position on the planet here. And even down in Mexico, we have quite a few surveyors down there. So this is a great proclamation and I strongly support supporting the surveyors and I strongly support you lobbying to have more of them hopefully coming out of Humboldt Polytechnic up there. So thank you for the opportunity to speak on this particular item pulled from consent.
Thank you commenter for your brief and to-the-point comments. And we have one other hand up in the Zoom and that is 0150. Welcome. You've got three minutes. There you go.
Hello, Dottie Russell again. Yes, surveyors are amazing. Without surveyors, there would be so many fights and so many crazy things going on that it would be intolerable. So the surveyors are amazing. It's a little bit confusing for people that aren't surveyors how things happen, particularly if markers are moved during a survey. So I'm not really sure how that works, but if there's, maybe Michelle Bushnell could explain off the record what's supposed to happen when a marker is moved from one place to another when a survey, surveying job is being done. So I'm a little bit confused about that. But all in all, the surveyors are amazing. There's a program called the Transitional Age Youth. Maybe there could be a way that those folks that have sometimes lost their way a bit could be introduced to this and helped with their opportunities to learn more and have a career that would be really wonderful and needed. And it's a young group of people that have been seeking some help and guidance. So that's the Transitional Age Youth. That would be nice to be working with the surveyors as well. That brings up again the issue of FEMA and the flood plain elevation. So whatever we have to do, whether it's finding somebody in another state or if it's finding somebody here that the county can embrace, the flood elevation certificate is inaccurate at this point with a lot of change in the river. So I hope that we can embrace these people that are so, so important in keeping peace in our community to further the accuracy of what's happening with the changes in the land that surrounds us. So thank you very much for the surveyors. We appreciate it. We've used you. We appreciate the help. It definitely is a peacemaking tool as well. So thanks very much.
Thank you commenter. And I don't see any other hands up in Zoom, so we'll go to those here in the audience today. Welcome. You've got three minutes to speak on the recognition of our surveyors.
Chair Steve Madrone, Vice Chair Rex Bone, Supervisor Michelle Bushnell, Supervisor Mike Wilson and our Supervisor Natalie Arroyo. I am a property owner with the Davis family in Michigan and California here in Humboldt County. And I want to acknowledge our surveyors and our supervisors for making sure every inch counts when we know the borders of the city of Arcata and the fence that is between the city of Arcata and the First Church of Christ. is between the City of Arcata and the First Church of Christ and the, the highway that we, who care about people trying to make it through inclement weather in their tents and really not doing so well, have our best ambassadors and people to follow the rules of the State of California for providing places and spaces for mentally challenged people to go to if their tents are deemed not acceptable. So thank you, surveyors and property owners and supervisors for helping the best we can to manage people first, along with deer and animals that have a way of getting around the, the surveyors' lines for our properties, whether they're privately owned or publicly owned, or private places of faith, that hopefully more and still more people will have the excellency of kindness and wisdom that our hospitals and our gainfully employed social workers and people will acknowledge our significant needs we still have in our county and other places. Thank you for your best collaboration from our county to other counties, that they will supersede us in, in the best of healthcare and shelter and permanent places for education and healthcare, in the gainfully employed volunteer and extra surveyed places. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you very much. You know, a lot of people wonder why lines and corners move. So what happens is, a lot of it was originally done with literally chains and compasses, right? But now we have laser machines. So it's not that the point actually moves. The point has always been in the exact same place, but our ability to find exactly where that point is has gotten better. And that's why the corners and the lines change, because our accuracy continues to improve. So if that helps with the understanding of why the corners sometimes move. At any rate, bring it back to the board for any final comments.
Thank you. I thank you, Dottie, for your comment. However, I'm not a land surveyor, so I'm not going to take that one on. But I do want to say that I'm so very proud of my husband, who is a land surveyor, and his, my father-in-law, who surveyed in Humboldt Mendocino and Trinity for years and years. And I never fully understood what land surveying did, or how precise it is and how much work it is, until I, you know, was holding the reflector for my husband. So I definitely appreciate it. I was very honored to bring this item today to recognize the land surveyors and have much respect for what they do. And with that, I'll make a motion to accept the proclamation.
I'll second.
Again, we have a motion by Supervisor Bushnell and a second by Supervisor Arroyo. And is there any final comments by the board? Seeing none, we'll go ahead. Yeah, I keep trying to get mine up, but it's not coming up, so we'll do a roll call again, please.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Mondrone?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yep.
Supervisor Bone?
10-4.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. And I wanted to be able to allow our surveyors to get back to work right away, so that's why I moved that up, a slot or two. And they're off and working. You saw them, they're, they're out of here. So we'll go to public comment on non-agenda items, and we'll start out with the Zoom. And I do see that there's a couple of hands up there. We've got 5288. This is your chance. You've got three minutes on non-agenda items.
Ken Swawski, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Yes, the person, a local person who participated in helping clean up that encampment that had been abandoned was Erin McClure, and I'm doing a shout out to her. It's always great to have local people participating in things that sometimes the city personnel are reluctant to do. And apparently it wasn't Sheriff Billy himself directly, but it was Sheriff's staff that they helped on that. So a shout out to Sheriff Billy and his staff. I did want to make comment on something that's upcoming, I believe tomorrow. You have an ad hoc committee meeting, a meeting with Mr. Thurman, and Mark is somebody who I've been dealing with quite a bit. I think this meeting will go well. I'm quite optimistic that something will work out on this. Mr. Thurman's a very sharp person, and his person who drew this up is no, is no slouch. If you want to Google his attorney who drew up this potential ballot measure, his name is Kevin Bundy, and he comes highly recommended, my understanding, by many different people. And that's a good thing, because anytime you're dealing with a legal issue, to have somebody who can work with your county staff, who's capable, and hopefully you'll have Natalie Duke working with Kevin Bundy when it comes down to final legal resolution. Hope that the legal people get involved in a timely manner in these negotiations, and hopefully it goes well. So best well wishes. I have been having quite a bit of communication, I appreciate, with Natalie Lapp of the Growers Alliance. I appreciate her input and everybody's willingness to discuss this, bring this to the table. Would have been nice to have happened, you know, four months ago or something like that, but hopefully it'll move rapidly and the people can have their concerns, the concerns addressed, and the voters won't have to vote on this one, and we'll fix it to a three-point ordinance and maybe some other legal agreements. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on this. We do, I do have major concerns I wish to bring out there with a lot of the sewer treatment systems throughout Humboldt County. City of Arcata is apparently putting $100 million into three phases, possibly the one in Arcata. I do not support doing that. I think a regional system, separate ones would be better. I think that location is very prone to potential damage, even with a small tsunami could put the whole city in jeopardy. I don't know of those of you who have input on those things with the municipalities. They all need to look at their sewer systems and upgrade them. They're frequently in poor locations, potentially have infiltration into the river, and everybody wants us, everybody wants us to take care of this situation. This is a big project. We have to, we have to endeavor to fix some errors that were made in the past regarding these sewer treatment systems. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, commenter. And next we have 0116. Star 6 to unmute. Welcome. You've got three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
This is Ash Cheater with LosCoastPopulace.com, speaking on non-agenda items, specifically the resolution on hate speech from January. I'm going to play a clip with the head of Lost Coast Pride, Kalen Rivera, on the Growing Pains podcast with Nicolas Flores, in which he confirms the ignored, inappropriate sexual gyrating and cash tipping at the Halloween drag show, and says it was a result of hasty planning and admitted fact stated by multiple protesters labeled as a hate group.
Isn't that what kind of came out with the Redwood Pride drag show? There was gyrating, there was the tipping, there were these things that might not actually be true, but they were present in this one. So you're kind of in that boat?
Right. I believe because that drag show was kind of like the, after the pandemic and everything else, it was the first drag show. And I don't think that it was necessarily thought through, because, you know, typically when we do a drag show, it, there's tipping and whatnot. And I don't think that that was thought through as far as for its show. That show was, it wasn't very long. It was kind of not last minute thrown together. Everybody knew what they were going to do, but pretty quickly put together, right? So I don't think that those rules and standards had been thought about.
And this discussion has moved on to Ferndale with their upcoming proclamation on hate speech. The marquee at St. Mark's Church is being labeled as hate speech show with the phrase "hurt by LGBT community healing here." Here is a clip of Pastor Bramwell offering his interpretation of this statement in the framework of love and not hate.
And I have to focus on the gay person. But as I explained earlier, I would think that the gay person would want people to come to church too, to hear about healing that could help them as well. And they don't. And this is sort of a stereotypical kind of story. There's a grandmother who doesn't understand why her grandson is gay, and he's devastated because of the tsunami out of the closet any day. What's the best thing that could be for both of those people? The gay Johnny and grandma. Hearing about free goodness is the best thing that could, that could happen for both of them. Johnny, if they gave her life, by having a grandmother who understands how to love, choose to sacrifice, is going to serve both Johnny and grandma the best. So that's an interesting case. You think that even though these people choose this life or burn into this life, they should still be, they shouldn't be outcast? Yeah. Even though you disagree with their decision? Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, commenter. And next we have 0150. Star 6 to unmute. There you go. Welcome. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. This is Dottie Russell again. I just want to talk about how we're going to keep track and help the situation with people that are not housed now and the ones that are housed now that are really needing to be evicted, but people are trying. So I'll give you an example. Right now, I have one, two, three, four, five, six people that have not paid rent since the housing is key a year ago ended. There's a 2-1-1 number that people are supposed to be called for resources. So, you know, being evicted is a very, very emotional thing, and being evicted with parents and a child is trauma that we're trying to eliminate throughout the world, but throughout Humboldt County and working really hard on it. There has to be a follow-through of people that, that really need help, and there has to be some accountability. So if Adult Protective Service has been called, which was the case of a few people that ended up passing away, who were evicted, not by me fortunately, but, but the situation is, I just don't understand how we can be giving money to all kinds of people, all kinds of organizations for rapid rehousing, and then if somebody hasn't paid rent in four months, five months, six months, because they got into this housing is key loop of COVID and not paying rent, and then just couldn't catch up, couldn't reprocess paying and how to do it because their budget and use of their money had changed. There needs to be a way that we have accountability to these people. How do we set up a separate organization, a separate number, a lead-in number from 2-1-1, from the agencies that are supposed to be doing rapid rehousing? How do we get this together?
30 seconds.
So that the burden, thanks. The burden isn't on somebody that cares about a tenant that needs some extra help catching up, or, you know, even like Section 8. How do we get this together so that people stay housed and the pressure isn't on them? The pressure isn't on the landlord, but instead it's shared out between everybody? It needs to happen, and it needs to happen right now, and I really want somebody...
Thank you, commenter. Sorry, Dottie, that three minutes goes quick, and we got the gist, so thank you for that. Next we have 6655. Star 6 to unmute.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Okay, great. Yeah, I just, I wasn't actually planning on making a comment now, but after hearing Dottie Russell state that, I just want to piggyback on what she said. Down in Southern Humboldt, everyone I know, almost, it seems like at least like 50%, if not like 75% of the folks are months behind on their rent. There's an entire like economy that's collapsed here, and the rental programs available for assistance are not actually effective whatsoever. I am actually trying to get rental assistance right now myself. I'm a single mom with a toddler, and again, I want to piggyback on what Dottie Russell just said. Section 8 or HUD or whatever, that takes about four years to get approved for. Your house has to be up to code in order to approve it. So even if your landlord is nice enough and you have a beautiful house, if you've got a compost toilet or gray water, you're out of luck on Section 8, which really cuts out a lot of people. The 2-1-1 number is totally ineffective. It sends you to DHHS, I believe it was, which then sends you to a housing homeless prevention program and some sort of program that helps families avoid homelessness. I've been on this list for, what, seven months now with a notice to pay or quit, and I've not received any help from DHHS, again, with the child. So yeah, I really want to reiterate what Dottie said. A lot of people are struggling down here. It shouldn't be left up to landlords who have compassion and don't want to evict their tenants. There is tons of TARP funding, you know, the same thing that Brett Favre capitalized on recently, that comes into our local economy, and it should be distributed appropriately. The Southern Humboldt Resource Center, Family Resource Center is great, but maybe if we gave them more resources to distribute amongst the community and other agencies around other districts like that, it would be more effective, because currently the Department of Health and Human Services is not offering any homeless prevention program. I can tell you that for sure. And yeah, again, there's a struggling economy here. People would love to have good-paying wages and such, but pretty much all the businesses are closed down, and I'm not sure where someone would go to work to even get a living wage right now. So thank you again, appreciate it, and thank you, Dottie.
Thank you very much. Now we'll go to those here in the audience today. Welcome. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, supervisors. I'm here this morning to comment on the discussion last week about the proposed wind farms. As discussed last week, two of the supervisors are going to Baltimore next week to the IPF conference. What I did not hear was any mention of hydrogen production in Humboldt County. It has been said that the excess renewable energy is the best solution for carbon-neutral hydrogen electrologist production. The big picture for, for large hydrogen generation in Humboldt County is the fact that there's two wind farms proposed that are going to be producing renewable energy and will be landing the power on the Samoa Peninsula Deepwater Port. It has been stated these farms will be producing excess energy that cannot be exported efficiently for years as transmissions, lines and easements will, will be needed, will, will need to be constructed. The fact, this fact was expressed yesterday in an article in the Los Coast outpost. Future market projections for electrologist production. Early market policy-supported additions state that a 30,000 kilogram per day plant operating at 85% capacity produces enough hydrogen to supply 35,000 light-duty vehicles. The roughly 6, 36,000 kilograms per day capacity under construction to serve the hydrogen transportation market will be adequate to supply the sector until 2025. By 2030, at the forecasted growth rate, there will be demand for several new facilities per year. Humboldt, Humboldt County, the port of Humboldt Bay is of strategic importance because it is the only deepwater shipping port between San Francisco, 225 nautical miles to the south, and Coos Bay, Oregon, approximately 156 nautical miles to the north. Locating this type of hydrogen production using electrolysis in the deepwater port provides unlimited potential for exportation of compressed hydrogen to the world servicing H2-powered shipping vessels, shipping vessels and H2-powered shipping trucks moving goods to and from the port. H2, two, hydrogen can be stored, bared, shipped, trucked, and dispensed like any other petroleum product, and there is no charging time. Additional sectors that will rely on H2 production...
30 seconds.
Law enforcement, public transportation, drag trucks, UPS, Amazon, forklifts, construction and farm equipment. In conclusion, there's various scenarios developed for renewable hydrogen demand plants to supply. There's man, show that hundreds of new renewable hydrogen production plants will be needed over the coming 30 years under all scenarios. For the... Um, for the supervisors, you're going to the IPF.
Thank you very much. I apologize.
I have some handouts that I, there's workshops at this conference that I would like for you to to look at if possible.
Yeah, you can give those to the clerk of the board. Thank you very much. And next, welcome. Come on up. And you've got three minutes on non agenda item.
Chair Supervisor Steve Madrone, Vice Chair Supervisor Rex Bone, Supervisor Michelle Bushnell, Supervisor Mike Wilson, Supervisor Natalie Arroyo. We have significant challenges with our budgets and first and foremost, it is with our deputy sheriff's police officers that are in McKinleyville where my station door was locked twice. I don't know what's happening. I want to make sure that our budgets are carefully making sure we have gainfully employed people to manage the front desks of our Humboldt County Police Stations where the door is open, the hours that are printed and the city of Arcata is also supported with that first responder people. They are very above average, nice and diplomatic, but we've got to make sure we're able to hire the best of the best from our state of California to follow the rules such as if you're removing people in their tent camping, you've got to provide another place for them to go. People are behind on their rent. People who own properties need, may need uh legal services for removing tenants and renters who are months behind on rent and payments. And I really hope this will be Humboldt County's best effort moving forward uh from border to border when the news was not good from the great town of Phoenix and the great state of Arizona. Thousands of people who may be forced out of their houses in the great state of California because of the flooding that has already happened and may happen. And we here in Humboldt County have Trinidad and Ferndale and Riodell and the city of Eureka and the city of Arcata where we in McKinleyville hopefully can use every possible place to help those who who are in emergency situations and find that special place that if it's a temporary home or shared with a senior that has an extra room, that it is not an issue anymore for our college students where they're going to stay for the next three years of their higher education. Thank you very much for your best efforts.
Thank you commenter. And uh, anyone else uh public comment on non agenda items, please step forward.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Madam CAO, County Council, ladies and gentlemen of Humboldt County. My name is Vernon Price. Um, I came before you last week with an issue and I want to thank the county for expeditiously uh addressing that issue. I do want to make one thing clear though. It may have seemed like I was talking about them getting terminated. These are extra help people that have 900 hours a year that are running, running short between now and the next fiscal year. We can't afford as peers to lose our peer coaches one month, one day, one week. So let's just keep that in our hearts because this is a vulnerable population. Thank you so much and have a good day.
Thank you Vernon. Okay, seeing no others coming forward for public comment on non agenda items, we'll go to our next item on the agenda and that is item H1, which is a recognition certificate for the McKinleyville Family Resource Center. And I believe we may have Robin Baker and Aristea Salisbury here today. And I believe Ryan is going to introduce the the item.
Morning supervisors. My name is Ryan Heights, Economic Development Coordinator with the County Administrative Economic Development Division. And we're here today to recognize McKinleyville Family Resource Center for being Humboldt County's 2022 Best Company to Work For. The Best Company to Work For campaign is a joint effort between the County of Humboldt's Economic Development Division and the North Coast Journal. Surveys are performed by the North Coast Journal to identify employers who rate high across a number of categories which are important to employees. Scores are then assigned to employers based on direct employee feedback and employee voting. Based on that feedback, McKinleyville Family Resource Center is the newest addition to that prestigious list of local employers. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Steve Madrone to present the certificate and invite McKinley Familyville, McKinleyville Family Resource Center and uh North Coast Journal to provide any comments they may have.
Great, thank you. Let's go ahead and have you guys come on up and then I'll come down with this certificate. We'll get a picture.
Hi, good morning. My name is Robin Baker. I am one of the interim co-directors at the McKinleyville Family Resource Center. We're really grateful for this recognition today and I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the Board of Supervisors for all of your support for the 16 family resource centers around Humboldt County and also to the Department of Health and Human Services for their critical partnership with us. We wouldn't be able to do the work we do without them, especially the development of the center at McKinleyville, which is the first of its kind integrated services center in Northern Humboldt. If you haven't been to see us yet, I hope you'll come. Um, in addition to opening our doors in 2022 amidst the pandemic, we were able to provide services to 4,000 people belonging to 1,200 households in the Northern Humboldt region. Um, Anhaleka Lua, who is here today, provided services to over 155 Spanish speaking individuals in the community. Uh, we've established ourselves as a safe place for Black Indigenous people of color. 29% of our clients accessing family assistance prefer Spanish as their first language. Because of the increased need in our community, we had to triple the amount of family assistance we provided this year. Um, that includes things like diapers, hygiene supplies, bus passes and bill pay assistance. We were also awarded $450,000 for the California Community Reinvestment Grants to begin a youth workforce development program. And we were conditionally awarded $2.3 million by the California Department of Social Services to start a guaranteed income pilot program that will provide $1,000 for 18 months to 150 pregnant and parenting people in Humboldt County. Um, but it's not just the work we do we're proud of, we're also proud of how we do it. I did bring our safety policy with us here today. It's only five pages long. I do encourage you to take a look. This is the way that we as a team agree to be in relationship with one another as we are doing this work. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Aristea Salisbury. I am Robin's other half at the moment as co-interim executive director. Um, you may have seen Hillary Byer here, who we want to acknowledge alongside Ryan. Um, and I just want to take a moment to say kind of some of the core things that I think allow us to do the work that we do and make us really proud to receive this award. Really, I think a lot of our work boils down to kind of two core values. One around um trust, believing one another, taking care of one another within that. Um, and then we also have a very strong commitment to anti racism in our organization and being willing to have hard conversations as a team. And when we're willing to have those hard conversations with one another around access to services in other language, languages around colonization, uh, we actually all took, I think we're with at three of four Native American Studies courses at Cal Poly Humboldt together so that we can have these hard conversations that then enable us to serve the community better. Um, and so I'm just really proud of the work that we do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, and Hillary couldn't be here today?
She just left.
She was? She just left, yes. There, great. Um, well, fantastic work there. The best company to work for in Humboldt County in 2022. So let's give a round of applause. All right, thank you folks. Well, this is a real feel good date. Supervisor Bone.
Well, I, I talked to Hillary earlier and I, I'm really sorry she isn't here because I mean, she was the heart and soul of getting that built and partnered up with um our previous supervisor, Ryan Sundberg. And I bet I fielded probably 50 phone calls from Hillary towards the end, trying to figure out when it was going to get done. And in turn, Connie Beck had to answer 50 phone calls of mine as we came to making that fruition. I think the success of that and the forethought, it's nice to see that things actually do prevail and happen. And I think the success of that and then the way they're handling is great. And so, yeah, Hillary had her child here and had to get out of here, so. Anyway, great to see her.
Uh, any other board members?
Yeah, I just want to say that oftentimes we're talking about the services that are provided by institutions like this. But real, but to support the workforce within that is reflective on to the, on those services. And I just want to, you know, sometimes, you know, we're just, we're not, we're not as appreciative as we maybe could be about that element. We try real hard, but it's, 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 it's great to have that recognition in this moment. Um, and so I'm just proud of, of, of all the people um doing that hard work. Thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Wilson. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go to public comment uh on this item. Uh, I don't see any hands up in Zoom at this point. Anybody here today in the audience that would like to come forward? Welcome.
I, I just want to say congratulations to the Family Resource Center. They deserve it all. Um, and I'm sorry that Hillary's not here because I, I agree Supervisor Bone, Hillary Byer is the driver of the Family Resource Center and, and the center and how we are um with each other there. And I, I just appreciate all of the work there and um, you know, her steadfastness to get us where we are today is, is pretty amazing. So I'll, I'll give her a call later.
Yeah, thank you very much. Next, please.
Thank you Supervisor Steve Madrone, our Chair, our Vice Chair Supervisor Rex Bone, and all of our supervisors, including Michelle Bushnell, Mike Wilson, Natalie Arroyo, and all those connected with our 16 family resource centers as a participant in the McKinleyville Family Resource Center from the first dirt of shoveling and groundbreaking till now. This is a very valuable and continuing supported place where, as was mentioned, 25% of their clients prefer Spanish. There is a significant need for educating our youth force and helping families in welcome baby newborns in the greater McKinleyville area. I have a Cal Poly Humboldt, Humboldt State University graduate as my case manager who is a very good listener, who is attempting to help me and my family with a very complex situation, at least talk through and think through what a good social worker, case manager person can do and can't do. And so I am truly blessed to have the recognition of the number one place for having gainful employment in the County of Humboldt B, our McKinleyville Family Resource Center, where it is always an excellent shopping experience with quality food and nice people as you walk into the doors or if you're, as I have taken through a, an alternate route of helping people to gain in their sanity and in their abilities to best be part of our Humboldt County. Thank you very much for your recognition, your support and for visiting and supporting all of our family resource centers and the fine work they do hour by hour, day by day, keeping those doors open and our services improving. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Eric Koenega. I'm a program manager with DHHS. I work um in tandem with the McKinleyville Family Resource Center. I am the DHHS representative for Danenut Wadak, the center at McKinleyville. And that is the weat name that means literally we help each other. And that is the work that they do and the environment that they foster at the McKinleyville Family Resource Center. Working alongside this group of people, um, I'm super impressed with the work they do. Most importantly is the culture that they've created for their staff there. Um, as Aristea and Robin have mentioned, um, they have anti racist policies and practices that they use. They have difficult conversations, supporting our community and the staff that they work with. Um, they really create a learning environment so that um it is okay to fail and it is okay to make mistakes and to build from those and to grow. And they really foster that kind of relationship with their staff. And it really works from the leadership all the way down, like Hillary's example and Robin and Aristea, um, they use reflective supervision techniques, they, they practice accountability and they just really lift each other up and, and support each other. And what a phenomenal place to work for and work next to. So I really appreciate um the culture that they have created in their workforce. And during 2022, I believe they actually increased staff while lots of us are struggling with that, withholding on the staff. So I really appreciate um again, the teaming that they've done and the support they provide to each other. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And um, I know we kind of snuck up on folks in Zoom, so we do have one hand up there. Four seven five three, um, this is your opportunity to comment. Star six to unmute. There you go. Welcome.
Good morning. This is Lisa Dugan and I just wanted to publicly praise and thank and say how much I admire Hillary Byer and her leadership as well as Aristea Salisbury and Robin Baker. I learn something new from them every single time I have an interaction. Their type of leadership, if we could see that across the county, across the world, it would be a much better place. They value people, they value people's voices, they allow people to contribute um in equal measure and um they lead an organization the way that I always wanted to, but didn't quite have the capacity to. And uh, I think McKinleyville and County of Humboldt is just so very lucky to have people who practice the leadership that they do. And uh, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Concise, to the point. And uh, last hand up in Zoom that I'll call is zero one five zero. Welcome.
Hi, Dottie Russell again. Southern Humboldt could really use a McKinley, uh, I'm going to restate that. The Family Resource Center down in Southern Humboldt does um a lot of work and they apply for grants, they get some grants, they are trying really hard. It's a very difficult uh community and economic development and houseless population. So they, it's, it's very complex. Uh, I think that throughout the county, we have different programs, different people doing different things, different nonprofits, different for profits, family resource centers, all that have unique talents. And I think if we get together somehow, maybe if somebody that's a supervisor wants to take this on, um, or somebody at DHHS, wherever, uh, to find out what each organization is doing that is a strength, certainly across the family resource centers, um, any other places that um, that are walk-in places or places that people can go, certainly our CAA as well, to find out what their strengths are. If we find out what each, each organization's strength is, then we can build to make it happen throughout the county. If we're doing something in Southern Humboldt, let's share it up in Northern Humboldt. If there's a lot going on in Northern Humboldt, let's make it happen in Southern Humboldt too. If we're not building on the strength that each organization has, we're not. not using our team effectively. So just like a family needs to know what their folks have to offer, so does the county, so that we can do a way better job and stop the people that are dying almost every single day in Humboldt County. Thanks.
Thank you commenter. And so with that, we'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. I just really want to congratulate the McKinleyville Center and all they've done. It sounds like a great center. I haven't had the opportunity to visit that, but I do visit the ones in my district, and they're amazing. And they provide so much services and are so interactive with the communities. They regularly speak with DHHS. And also, Food for People is something that really provides for our communities throughout Humboldt County. So I appreciate them and the interaction that they have with the centers, all of them. And so I just think this is such great work, makes such a huge difference to our young families and young communities. I know I've had opportunities to help and volunteer in the Redway one and be involved with the center directors there. And I just so appreciate what they do, how caring they are, how they connect people with the services that are needed. And I know McKinleyville does that as well, because I just heard that. And so congratulations to McKinleyville and all the centers, really.
Thank you. Any other Supervisor Arroyo?
I just want to acknowledge the incredible work that Family Resource Centers throughout our county do and Community Resource Centers. Some are FRCs and some are CRCs, but they all do incredible work of connecting people to resources. You know, a lot function as their only, like, de facto community center as well. Some of our really rural communities, some are located at schools, some are not. So it's definitely, like, I think, an under-appreciated in some ways network of ways that people connect to critical resources, whether it's food banks and commodities distribution days, or, you know, access to childcare, access to in-home supportive care services, all manner of really important needs. So I'm thrilled to be acknowledging the McKinleyville Family Resource Center. I have had the great pleasure of volunteering there. Actually, the Coast Guard, the Sector Humboldt Bay Coast Guard members help with food offloads on a regular basis, and I've helped with that in the past. And just seeing how connected people are there. And it is incredible to see the commitment and connectedness that staff and community members have through those services. I think a huge part of it is what Robin and Aristae just gave to us, these policies around how they will act towards one another and be incredibly proactive about what that looks like and how they work through challenges. And I applaud that, and I hope we will continue to learn from it, too.
Thank you very much. And yeah, just big shouts out to Hillary, Robin, Aristae, all the staff there at the center, as well as the staff here at DHHS that are here today and aren't here today. And also, a big shout out to Supervisor Sundberg. This is very much one of his legacies, that he really went to bat continuously to help make this happen, working hand in hand with Hillary and Connie Beck and her staff. So, big thanks to everybody. These things don't just manifest on their own. It takes dedication and commitment. And Supervisor Sundberg certainly showed that quality in helping make this happen. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Go ahead.
It's your district. I want to let you have it. I'll second that.
So we've got a motion by Supervisor Bushnell and a second by Supervisor Arroyo. And we'll take, I think, I've got my voting tab up, thanks to our incredible staff. And so we'll go ahead and click our tabs.
Great. Motion carries 5-0.
Great. Okay, with that, we're going to take a five-minute break for folks, and we will be back here at, looks like 10:41, 10:42. And we're going to jump into Code Enforcement's annual report. So, quick break, folks. We have item I-1, Code Enforcement Unit Annual Report, and we have staff from Planning and Building here to present.
Thank you, Chairman Madrone, members of the Board of Supervisors, John Ford with Planning and Building. I'm here with Karen Manell. And we're going to present the annual report on code enforcement. And I'll turn it over now to Ms. Manell.
Hi, good morning. I'm Karen Manell. I'm the Code Enforcement Manager for the county. And I've prepared a presentation that will be brought up momentarily. There it is. So this report describes the activities of the Code Enforcement Unit during the 2022 calendar year. Over the course of the year, we fully implemented a new process, and we've made significant progress toward addressing the backlog of cases. And yet we still have some challenges to face. The new process relies on the use of automated letters to inform property owners and complainants of the status of a case. When a new complaint is received, the owner, the occupant, and the complainant are mailed the initial letter identifying the problem. Code enforcement is able to mail this first letter within approximately eight days of receiving the complaint. Within a week of receiving the complaint, code enforcement staff will review internal data, satellite imagery, and permits to determine the next course of action. These activities are designed to determine the validity of the complaint. If the case requires an eyes-on-the-ground approach, then we will schedule a drive-by inspection. When the drive-by inspection's not feasible, for instance, if the property's located down a long driveway, another automated letter is generated and sent requesting a consent inspection. We sometimes send a final consent inspection if there's no response to the first request. If the research and/or inspection reveals that the complaint is unfounded, then the case is closed. And alternately, when the research indicates that there is a violation, then we send a violation warning letter out to the property owner. Once we have the evidence and know that there is a violation, there is a grace period allowing the property owners to abate the violations before notices are served. If the grace period passes with no indication of improvement, then the notices are served and recorded. The violation warning letter serves as the beginning of that grace period, giving them opportunity to address the violations before notices are served. The new process was implemented in 2021. And so 2022 represented the first year that the new process was used for the whole year. So in 2022, there were 329 new traditional cases opened, but there were 459 cases closed. This is a reversal of previous years when there were more cases opened than closed. Of the 329 cases that originated in 2022, 177 of them have been closed. And keeping in mind that the cases opened near the end of the year were still in the initial stages of our process and couldn't be closed yet. It's also worth noting that we received 84 complaints, which, after research and inspection, turned out to be unfounded. In 2020, I came before your board and reported that we had an extensive backlog of cases that were yet to be assigned. You may remember that, some of you. The new process has made significant progress toward addressing these legacy cases. We have dwindled the number of unassigned cases from 450 in the year 2020 to 200 by the end of 2022. When we did the math, we are estimating that we are closing 140% more cases than opening. Another measure of the accomplishments for 2022 were the four county performed abatements. The first was on a property on Montana Road in McKinleyville that had a deceased owner and had people living there creating quite a mess. The occupants of the site allowed a significant amount of solid waste and junk vehicles to accumulate, and the conditions were attracting rats to the neighborhood. The county abatement removed the solid waste and junk vehicles, conducted pest mitigation, and fenced off the property to prohibit access. The second county abatement was also on a property with a deceased owner. It was located on Spears Road in Eureka. The deteriorating conditions of this site, which were caused by squatters, included solid waste, junk vehicles, and construction without permits. The county hired a contractor to remove the vehicle's waste and secure the structure from the squatter's return. The third county-led abatement involved a longstanding case on Eel River Drive in Lolita. This is a 60-acre property, and it had numerous violations, which included junk vehicles, people living in RVs, maintaining a junkyard, solid waste, grading and development within a streamside management area. The project was divided into two phases to first remove the solid waste and junk vehicles and then address the grading and SMA violations. The first phase of the abatement was completed in April, and code enforcement's working to complete the second phase. There were approximately 17 tons of solid waste, 40 junk vehicles, and 250 tires removed from this property. And you can see from the before and after shot, especially in the northern area, how much material was removed. The last abatement we performed as a county took place on Summit Ridge Drive in Humboldt Hill. This is a case where the property owner had a relative who had accumulated solid waste and junk vehicles throughout the property, and they were also building code violations and zoning violations. The abatement was completed in May. And unfortunately, as we see with some regularity in our cases, that this property is starting to exhibit a recurrence of the same violations. And so a new case has been started in 2023. What this table shows is a summary of the four county-led abatements and their associated costs. Code enforcement followed the procedures for recovering these costs through the assessments, liens, and adding the recoverable cost to the property tax rolls. There were two other planned abatement projects that did not come to fruition in 2022. The first was a property in Trinidad where there were multiple unpermitted structures, RVs used as residences, solid waste, and junk vehicles. This abatement was postponed in an attempt to resolve the violation by other means. The second was the demolition of the Green Valley Motel, which was delayed due to ongoing negotiations with a potential buyer, which ultimately fell through. These two abatements would have fully utilized the allocated abatement funds for 2022, but because they were delayed and postponed, the county funded the four abatements that we see up here. I hope you can all see this. This is a table that I shared with you last year of upcoming potential abatement projects. The color code shows the updated status of each of the cases. This doesn't list all the projects that we currently have on our radar and will likely require a county abatement, because even in the years since I shared this list with you, other projects have become like a higher priority and have surfaced as needing attention. However, what I am intending to do with this table is to show you the progress on the cases that I did share with you last year. So the green color shows that the county performed the abatement, and there's four of those. The yellow indicates that the owner or the new owner has entered into a compliance agreement to conduct the abatement themselves. The brown color shows a case where we believe the county abatement will be necessary, but the owners submitted an appeal, and that hearing will need to take place before we can move forward. And then the red indicates a postponed project that I discussed up in Trinidad. And the light gray color is a case down on the Avenue of the Giants where it's really, it's a big homeless encampment, and it's going to be a multi-agency effort. It's going to be a big project when we get to it, but it's going to take a lot of legwork ahead of time. So just, that was intended to give you an update on, like, where these cases go after you hear me say we're going to be addressing them. Sometimes they go the way we go. We think they're going to go, and sometimes, you know, the property sells, a new owner steps in, and they take over and agree to start doing the compliance. So just to give you an example of that. So code enforcement is successful in getting property owners to self-abate. In fact, a vast majority of our cases are closed because the cleanup is completed by the property owner. This is a property that's located on Railroad Drive in McKinleyville area, and it represents a case whereby working with the representative of the property owner, the violations were abated without the county having to, I think, even serve notices in this case. It was just, they recognized the problem and came in and fixed it. Okay, so switching gears a little bit over to the cannabis cases. This table represents a numerical summary of the cannabis cases since 2017, since the code enforcement came to the Planning and Building Department. In total, there have been over 1,200 cases. There have been 393 submitted appeals. However, 85% of these ultimately settled before going to a hearing. And so there are just 56 cases awaiting appeal hearings at this point. Seven of the cases that had gone to appeal had filed further appeals with a superior court. There are nearly 400 cases still open. 187 of them are in a compliance agreement or have new ownership with the owner taking responsibility to abate the violations. We have recorded 21 assessments, and we have 14 assessments prepped for board approval. And then we also have another 111 pending assessments if the property owners don't respond to our ongoing efforts to bring the properties into compliance with them. In total, out of the 1,232 cases, 83% of them have been closed or are in a compliance agreement, which I believe is a fairly good record. The success of the cannabis abatement program is evident in the dramatic decrease of new outdoor cannabis cases in 2022. There are not many significant unpermitted outdoor cultivation sites still in operation. For the cannabis cases in '22, there were 65 new cases, with 56 of those stemming from attending law enforcement warrants. Of the 56 warrants, 32 of them were related to indoor cultivation. And there were 121 closed cannabis cases in 2022. So code enforcement does face several challenges. Deceased property owners is one of them. Code enforcement identified this issue in 2021, and it continues to be problematic in 2022. Since the code enforcement process is designed to hold the property owner responsible for public nuisances and violations on the property, it becomes difficult to make progress when there's no one to take that responsibility. You know, putting penalties on somebody who is deceased doesn't matter. That doesn't motivate anybody. So code enforcement continues to support the work of the public administrator who is responsible for overseeing probate of an estate. In 2022, we did county abatements on two properties where there were deceased owners, but the allocation for our county abatements is limited, and we cannot take this action on all the cases that have deceased owners. So another challenge that we have are homeless encampments and people living in RVs. You know, this is not news to you, but with the housing shortage, there is no place for these people can go or relocate. That would also not be problematic. And it's difficult to remove people from their living situation with the knowledge that they have no alternatives. And so this continues to challenge us in how to deal with homeless encampments and people living in RVs. Another challenge we face are complaints that we receive related to blight conditions, and they do not fall into a specific category of public nuisance or violation. So typical complaints can be overgrown vegetation or general dilapidation of buildings. So without there being a specific code or regulation, there's really no process for us to follow right now. And a possible solution, though, however, could be the development of a county ordinance addressing blight and providing an avenue for enforcement. And then the last challenge I'll share with you today is vacation rentals. It's estimated we have hundreds of vacation rentals in our county, but they're currently not allowed by zoning except in very limited circumstances. So complaints coming in regarding vacation rentals revolve around noise, parking, and changes to the neighborhood's character. The owners and operators of these properties are usually surprised to learn that vacation rentals are not allowed, especially considering how prevalent they are through the county and how they pay their transient occupancy taxes. Furthermore, the property owners express frustration that there is no permitting path available to legally operate. And for some, especially those who rent a portion of their property in order to supplement their income, the compliance is a financial hardship. So the good news is that the Planning and Building Department is in the process of developing an ordinance to address these short-term rentals, which will hopefully provide that permitting path and a path for enforcement as well. I included some data into the annual report, and this is a chart showing a summary of the data for our cases that are from 2022. So this is separated by supervisor district, and the orange is new traditional cases that were opened. The gray color is new cannabis cases opened. And then the yellow color are closed 2022 cases. This isn't all the cases that were closed, but this is just 2022 cases that were closed. So you can see how it splits out over the different supervisor districts. And here's some data regarding our cannabis cases. There were 65 new cannabis cases. 56 of those came from law enforcement warrants. We did have some compliance agreements. Most of those were no penalty compliance agreement, 31. And then of the new cases, there were four appeals requested. So that concludes the report for 2022. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board? Clarifications? Supervisor Bone?
Yeah. What's an unfounded complaint? Give me an example.
Give me an example.
An example is someone says that there's a whole bunch of trash in somebody's yard, and we drive by and we look, and there's garbage cans lined up against the house that all have tight-fitting lids, and a lot of it's neighbor.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll bring it up. When, we have our, our guys out in the field and everything else, they're, you know, they're focused on an address. Do they look side to side to see that there are other problems? I'm sometimes amazed when I, when I hear somebody's, I, because I've got, you know, my, I've got nine years' worth of complaints on a few facilities, and it doesn't look like there's any follow-up. I mean, we have, Fields Landing is, is still a mess, and we cleaned one house up, but the other, they're all deteriorating. They're all turning back into Summit Ridges, and, and one has got an alley, county alley blocked, and the house now is caved in upon itself after nine years of asking, and I, I just don't know where we're going. Because a lot of people have quit complaining. We've had less complaints. They've just quit complaining because they don't, they don't get anywhere. Walnut Avenue is going downhill again, by the way. But do the, do the, when they go out there, when the inspectors go out there, are they just focused on one thing? Because I, I know in the past, I was told that they couldn't do anything unless they had a complaint in hand. Can they, can they self-start a complaint themselves?
Generally, we follow up on the complaint, and we don't look for every violation that's out there because there are so many violations out there. And I believe your board directed code enforcement to be active in the terms of cannabis cultivation and junk vehicles. And so that's, those are the areas where we're active, but we don't drive around looking for violations in general, no.
No, and I, and I don't mean drive around, but the egregious ones you drive by when you're going somewhere, kind of like, kind of like when the sheriff gets a complaint call and he gets a speeder on the way. I'm just saying to, to, I'm just talking the egregious ones, because I've been to three houses over the last four days that have, in excess of eight vehicles, abandoned in their driveways, in their front yards, in the streets. And I just, and they said they've called in, and I don't know if that's an unfounded complaint or not. I'm just.
From time to time, we do pick up a complaint if it is egregious. Usually, those can also come to us through a building inspector who is out and about and who do look for issues. And environmental health can also refer cases to us, and the sheriff's office refers cases to us. So cases come to us for, from other county agencies that are out and about looking. And then from time to time, if we see something, I mean, we'll address it, but in the most part, the things that we see are, are not like that egregious. We're not going to drive by something egregious and leave it.
Okay. Other board members? Supervisor Arroyo?
I'm curious what the interface looks like with adult protective services or, you know, other, other providers of services. You know, I, I guess I'm specifically thinking about a neighborhood issue that I had where there was a senior involved, and there was some abusive conduct going on by people that had kind of moved under the property. So anyway, I, I wonder if you encounter that much and, and how you kind of handle those circumstances when they come up.
Yeah, we do encounter that, and we do work with DHHS, many of their divisions, including adult protective services. We will, if we see a situation where that we feel like an adult can't make a good decision for themselves, or they are potentially being misused by somebody or taken advantage of, then we will make a referral over to them. Often, we have even done joint inspections with people from DHHS before. But to answer more broadly your question, we do joint inspections with a lot of different agencies, like environmental health and CDFW, and just a lot of different agencies, so.
Great, thank you.
Supervisor Wilson?
Thanks, John. There's a question, I think, for you, which is, without getting into like the location, and there was a, there's a spot in my district that, where there's abatement, but also drug dealing activities associated with that. And then eventually, we went through a process to get to conservatorship. And so can we speak to that for a second? And then where is that on that list, you know, within, how would you define it?
So I can, I can address that if that's okay. Yeah, so that I know what property you're talking about. And that property was challenging because there were violations on that property, but then like Supervisor Wilson also said, there was drug activity. And it just seemed as though the problem was more a people problem than a land use problem. And so we considered doing an abatement on that property, but we felt that it would be a recurring problem. It would be, we'd clean it up, and the problem would return because it was more of a people problem than a land use problem. And so we decided to try something out of our code that we had never done before, which was receivership. And so one of our, our county council did the work to file that paperwork, and that's all legal stuff, so. But he did the stuff to file the paperwork, and we appointed a receiver to take control of the property. That receiver will clear the violations and fix up the property, and the equity in the property will pay for the work that they do, so it doesn't come out of our abatement allotment. And it could very well, you know, this is our first one, but it could very well be kind of a win-win-win where we don't have to pay where the property gets fixed up, and then the neighborhood results in having a new property owner potentially, unless the existing property owner can pay for that cost.
Through the chair, I just want to thank the staff on, I mean, certainly the Spears one that was on here was definitely, you know, impacting the neighborhood and neighbors directly. And I know Supervisor Bone speaks to that very eloquently with relationship to the, just to the impacts to the folks around those, those spaces. And, and I want to thank you for, you know, moving forward with this receivership process so that we have that as a tool in the future. And so hopefully, I mean, that, those neighbors definitely lived for, oh my gosh, many, many, many years in a situation that I just would not wish upon anybody. So anyways, I appreciate the work that's been done and, and the sort of threshold we've crossed in terms of being able to use this tool in the future.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Through the chair, I want to thank you for the report. I want to also recognize that there's some difference in the report this year at the request of the supervisors, which was by district. So thank you for that, so that we could reference easily by district. I want to recognize that we all have, you know, we, code enforcement is a tool that we use as well as supervisors. We get those complaints, and we call and see what's going on. I think I, all of us in every district have those certain problems. I know it, at times, to the community seems to move slow and doesn't seem to work well. And I want to encourage community members to reach out to code enforcement, to have that discussion, to see if they've made a complaint, where it's at, and how it's going. And there are lots of times information that can't be disclosed, and so that's an irritant to complainants at times, and I just want to recognize that. Also, you know, I recognize that there's issues in my district as well that move way slower than I would like, and for the comfort of the surrounding property owners, it is difficult to look at, to watch, and to, to not see. It seems simple, right? Clean your stuff up, but it doesn't always work that well. And so I applaud your efforts, and thank you for that, the report and updates.
Great, thank you very much. Supervisor Bone?
What can we do as a board to make some of these things, like deceased properties, like I've got in so many locations? And, and what we see? I mean, what can we bring forward? Basically, how, I mean, Summit Ridge. Summit Ridge, I mean, Summit Ridge is, how many times do we clean that up till we realize we fenced the thing off? And I, I understand that there are actually people living in that squalor, or trying to live in that squalor and everything else. But you have to understand, I've got ten neighbors that are having to live next door to that and suffer the recourse of that, and they're not putting any effort forward. Same thing in, in quite a few locations in, in Fields Landing. I mean, we go out there, we put the violation on, and, I mean, I was there Sunday, and it's deteriorated into a worse situation. And that's not even the, the little house that's fallen in amongst themselves. So I, what can we do up here to help the situation? I mean, it, it sounds like, I, I'd love to say we're doing a great job, but it just doesn't feel like it, because I get, we get, we've got so many locations that I drive by, and I'm going, and I, I don't want to call them in because I just, it's just not worth it. And I just, what can we do to help you? And, and don't say more money, because we've added more people. I just, but I'm just saying, what do we do?
I, I won't say more money, because it's not all about county-led abatements. It is about having the tools to be able to use. The receivership is, is an important tool that is proving successful in a case, and I'm sure that that is something that we will continue to do, especially in those problem properties whereby we take two steps forward and, and four or five steps back. And you're familiar with some of those, and those are painful. I, I think the other thing that, as Karen mentioned, getting a blight ordinance done, and we would look for your direction to pursue that. We've already talked about bringing something forward. But some of the sites that you're complaining, as was mentioned, those aren't really violations under the current code. But if we developed either a property maintenance or a blight ordinance, something that we can cite to, then they would be violations, and it would make it easier for us to say, you're in violation of county code and you need to correct this. And that's not currently a tool that we have.
Give us what you need, because I mean, it's just, and, and, Ms. Mano, I'm not trying to be hard on you, but it's probably one of the biggest complaints I get about over and over. And I mean, you know, Walnut Avenue. And I, I know I've got probably eight parcels I've been trying to deal with for nine years, ten years, eleven years, and we're just not getting anywhere. And, and I know we sold the Walnut property, but the other day I went by it, and it's, it's going downhill again. So I, I don't know what, what, what we're doing, and, you know, I don't know if that's held up. And it may be held up in planning and building on the remodel. I don't know. But I'm just, we've got to, we've got to figure out a way to make this somewhat easier. I appreciate the people that do it on their own, on the receivership end, but there's so much time and effort to get to that receivership point, too. But maybe if we get a, a system going, but, I mean, I, I don't know how, and deceased properties, I'm dealing with one you and I know at the end of my street, you know, forty yards from my house. And the only reason it's not a, an abatement problem is because all the neighbors mow it and keep it up. But it's an abandoned piece of property.
Yeah, and I do want to add in fairness to the code enforcement team that these problem properties that you have to deal with are things that they have to deal with on an ongoing basis. And those are the things that kind of raise red flags. But numerically, they're by far the minority, but they are the most obvious. And so what tends to happen is that a few bad situations tend to cover over all the good work that that team does to close out and get properties cleaned up. And, and I just want to say that because that, that team works very hard.
And John, I'm not on the team. I think the team does a great job. I think with the additions we've made to it and what we've had in the past, I think the improvements have been great. What tools do you need from us to make it easier and to make it even better? Because, because it's, you, you, these little, you have these little ten percenters that are taking sixty percent of our time. And I mean, and some of, some of the thing is, is as easy as, because we have the, the ability to look at, have somebody periodically, every thirty days, look at an aerial photo of when it was cleaned up and when it wasn't cleaned up. And, and it's pretty easy to see some of the locations of the four locations you mentioned today. A couple of them are starting, starting to get a buildup of cars again. And, and catch it now before it gets into the situation where we're paying fifty and sixty thousand dollars to clean it up.
We, we, we do re, through the chair, I apologize. We, we do absolutely monitor, and where things turn south, we do renotice. Walnut is one of those that we are absolutely looking at. I won't name names, but Fields Landing is, is one where there are regular conversations on how to deal with that, and we're actually getting better. We've learned some lessons about how to coordinate with the entire department to make sure that we're actually being more direct and directive in terms of making those things happen. So we hear you. We're trying to make them faster, but then the other thing that I absolutely wanted to say is that we do have to walk a pretty precise line in terms of property rights. And, and so people have rights, even if they abuse them, they still have rights, and that, that has to be respected.
Okay, so I've got Supervisor Wilson and then Arroyo in the queue. Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, thanks. So I think one of the tools that, that Director Ford mentioned was a, was a blight ordinance, and so, which I think could be helpful in that we may be able to address some things a little quicker before they get even more out of control, to where they get to that place where, where they're, where they're, you know, they're even harder to, to, to clean up. Going back to these case, some of these cases where there are the, the behavioral issues and by behavioral typically that, in this, meaning drug activities, which have a lot of traffic associated with them. I want to, I want, in this case, again, the, the neighborhood that dealt with this situation that I'm referring to really did so through a neighborhood watch program, which was very, very helpful in gathering what was needed to, to, so that code enforcement was also working with law enforcement to, to get to the, to get to this, to the space where I think we are really finding, finally getting to that resolution. And so, you know, I have, and I'm sure my fellow supervisors have in these cases, if there isn't a neighborhood watch associated with that, with that particular, with those, some of those particular locations, there are some folks out there that can help neighbor, you know, neighbors get together to do that, that work. It's unfortunate that neighbors have to get together to do that work, but it is what it is. And so again, I want, you know, it is another tool to assist neighbors in helping themselves, to help the county to get to resolution. So I appreciate that.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. I'd also be interested in, you know, the option of blatant property maintenance ordinance just as a tool that can be used in certain circumstances, usually as a form of encouragement for people to address the concerns and know that, you know, mostly that would be, I think, a tool for getting voluntary compliance, but still a useful tool. I really appreciate Supervisor Bone for bringing up the issue of, you know, deceased property owners and then the kind of abandonment that comes along with that. I know that, you know, on the city council when I was there, we were talking kind of right at the end of my time there about some kind of occupancy-related tools that would address basically, you know, keep homes from becoming long-term vacant homes. And so I, I don't know exactly, frankly, where they've gone with that, where the staff have gone with researching that, but that might be something to, to consider doing in lockstep with the city, or, you know, we might benefit from what they're doing as well. And then, you know, the city of Rico has done extensive receiverships throughout the city, and that can be very helpful. I, I found that that was really helpful to work with both negligent landowners and people who are unable to address the issues on their property for a wide variety of reasons. And one thing I really appreciate about receivership was that the receiver can be sensitive to the housing displacement concerns around this whole issue and work with the, both the public agency and the property owners to address that and try to keep people housed, because obviously some of these issues can result in people being displaced. So I, I've really appreciated that, and I'm certainly receptive to exploring that on a, on a broader level. And then I do appreciate the vacation rental ordinance work that you all are doing and look forward to that coming forward, just so we're creating some good guidance around that and making a pathway for, for those that are appropriate and figuring out what to do in sites where that's not appropriate. So all of those seem like tools that we can, can and already do use, but. So all of those seem like tools that we can, can and already do use, but can use more of. So thank you for the report. It's really interesting. And I can see that, you know, while there are not a lot of cases in my district, it's, you know, largely because most of my district falls in city limits, but the city struggles with many of the same issues. And I think we can collaborate on solutions.
Thank you. And you know, like any of these kinds of problems, well, first of all, let me say thank you Karen and your staff and John for the incredible work you do with a huge volume of problems. Like you said, there's so much on the table to deal with. It's not like you're trying to go around and look for, for more because you're still dealing with them. And I know you're not looking the other way either. You're, you know, trying to figure out how to deal with all these things. So thank you for, for the hard work that staff put into this. I'm sure that it is not easy work. But like any problems, solutions come when we really think about carrots and sticks. And so blight ordinances are stick. So are notice of violations, notice of abatements. Those are the regulatory things that say, you have to do this or else. But successful programs usually have lots of incentives or carrots embedded in them. And some of those, one was mentioned, the APS, Adult Protective Services. I've had a number of cases in my district where people have overgrown parcels, usually single, older, single adults that are seniors, and it's just overwhelming. They don't have the resources to deal with it. And they're afraid to call APS because they don't want to go into conservatorship, right? They want to maintain their freedoms. There are cases where conservatorship is a great option, but I run into many people that are like, if I call APS and ask for help, then I'm starting down a path of potentially heading into conservatorship. So that scares people away from reaching out for that resource. And I found that APS actually has a teen landscape crew that they're able to bring in, that is youth jobs, and they're able to come in and help these landowners clean up the overgrown habitat. There's really rat habitat, basically. And so that's been a neat tool, you know, that I think we can use more. And Connie Beck and her staff at APS have been really helpful in, in providing those resources to landowners that simply have debris. And with these recent snowstorms down to the coast, we saw a lot of debris come down. And so a lot of people are overwhelmed with debris in their yards and their properties right now. So there's, there's some need there. Another incentive program is Clean California, a great program being managed by Caltrans and our state tax dollars. Julia Peterson, Tom Fitzgerald there, incredible staff, working with all of our communities, doing free dump days, free appliance days, tire days, dump vouchers, just an amazing amount of activity going on there. And that is a fantastic incentive program. Another one that I think as a board, what's that?
The Samoa Bridge this weekend.
Samoa Bridge this weekend. Last weekend they were in Hoopa. They've been in Oryc. They've been all over our county and a lot of help there, including our, our franchisers who are helping to, to help pull this off as well. Another one would be for our board to perhaps consider free dumping. You know, we charge for dumping services and I know it's not the only reason for blight or for a lot of excess refuse on properties, but it is certainly one of the big issues is that it costs a lot to dump. Like right now, if you've got a lot of green waste, which, you know, most people don't see as blight, but it could cause fire, bring in rats, it can be $40 to $50 a truckload to take your, your, you know, woody debris, your limbs and everything into the, the green waste facility. So that is kind of a detriment to actually getting it done. There are a few counties who actually don't charge any dumping fees. We did this as a county back in the 80s when there was so much dumping happening on our county roads and highways that we actually opened up a bunch of transfer stations. And for a little while, they were free, but then eventually we went back to charging fees. And it's a difficult thing, you know, to, to let go of that revenue, especially in a tough budget situation like we have right now. But, and the costs of illegal dumping don't actually show up on our budget sheet, other than perhaps in code enforcement and other kinds of things. So if there was free dumping, it would be one incentive, one type of a carrot that could provide landowners and neighborhoods the ability to help clean up properties. If, you know, because that's a very insurmountable barrier. You know, everybody wants to come there and clean it up, but then you're looking at $500,000, a couple thousand dollars in dump fees. And the cars is a whole nother matter hauling those away. So anyway, I just think that as we're developing programs for us as a board and as a county to think about how we can incentivize this kind of work would be really good to go hand in hand with a blight ordinance or other kinds of things, short-term rental ordinances and things like that. So I just want to encourage us to think about that. So we've had a chance up here at the board, so I'm going to take it to public comment. We'll start with those in Zoom. And I see we have three hands up. We'll start with 0150. This is your chance.
They lowered their hand.
They lowered their hand. We'll go, yes, okay. We'll go with 5288. You're first on the list right now. And star six to unmute. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Well, I really appreciate Steve Madron's comments on this topic regarding free dumping. It used to be, my understanding was part of the contract you would have with your people who benefited from the business of garbage where you had working relationships there and they provided a certain amount. Let's go to a third world country. We don't pay for garbage pickup down there. When you have free garbage pickup, there's a lot less, there's no excuse to be leaving it around. It still happens. And then of course, our biggest problem here is the American attitude regarding vehicles. Down there, they probably get an average of 10 more years' life on their vehicles. Probably two-thirds, if not three-fourths of the vehicles you see in our junkyards would be kept running during the period. And then when they do go to the junkyards, that goes with very little cost, no headache. And as long as we have the current, very highly regulated and very constrictive and the cost involved, you're going to have more and more problems. It did kind of bother me on the vacation rental thing. I'm quite aware, as we see Humboldt State is taking over a whole bunch of motels, there's a trend to have those motels turned into affordable housing projects. And the future is these vacation rentals. And according to your thing, we don't even have a way to permit them. They're not legal. And if you really want to be realistic, those things need, that, you need to spend a lot of time on dealing with that particular vacation rental. And many of us feel that the future of Humboldt County is the tourism business. People don't want to stay in motels. And especially any, any river where actually it's just a bedroom or part of a home, or you have an occupied person there making a little extra money, older person or things, those should be a permitted use throughout the county under those circumstances. Those aren't the ones where you're having problems with the neighborhood having complaints because they're there the whole time managing it and it's their bed. So strongly recommend you move forward on some regulations, especially in that department. And good luck with this. Conservatorship and things is great. And I strongly suggest you look at those on, on the process for all the growers out there that you're going to have coming to you that are being abandoned on a regular basis. And they will be ramping up quite rapidly in that area. So good luck.
Thank you, commenter. And next we have 4753. Star six to unmute. There you go. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Lisa Dugan. I am a neighbor in the Montana Road Code Enforcement and part of the Neighborhood Watch there. And I wanted to say thank you to the board for supporting the work of Code Enforcement, thanking John Ford, particularly Shawna, who was the person who came and worked with our neighborhood to help clean the parcel up. And not only that, we appreciate the use of and hopefully the continued use of tools that are outside the box, which in this case, because there was a deceased property owner, had to happen as soon as the property was cleaned up. What happened was dumping started the very next day. And through the collaboration of people like Ginger Campbell at Community Watch, I mean, Neighborhood Watch and working with the staff at Code Enforcement, they were right out immediately dealing with the issue and were able to eventually put a fence up. And I have to say, our neighborhood is completely different than it was prior to this. It has cut down on traffic because we had a people problem, not just a trash and rat problem. And the, the fence has actually created a completely different neighborhood. We still have ongoing issues because there is no occupancy of the property, but it's, it's a world of difference. And the more the board can support alternative tools and code enforcement is able to use them, the better. I appreciate the conversation that Natalie has brought up about using APS and the fact that code enforcement also works and understands that some of these issues are larger societal issues brought on by mental health, addiction and things like that. And that there are fine legal lines that need to be walked. The process is not always perfect and not, not always as fast as we would like. But I just wanted to speak up for the neighborhood where it, it was working and, and acknowledging that we have a lot of volunteers in McKinleyville that may be, as Supervisor Madron pointed out, Chairman Madron, that pick up trash on often a daily basis. And so those collaborative solutions sometimes are probably helping a few of these properties stay out of having to be just a county solution that the community steps up occasionally, takes responsibility. But I just wanted to say thank you very much. Your efforts are appreciated.
Thank you, commenter. And next we have 0150.
I got a little bit mixed up with my star sixes and star nines there. So first of all, I just want to say that with fewer complaints and more progress and less conflict, it was a win-win situation for the last year. So as we've heard over and over, if we work together in collaboration, a lot of things can get done. So, and it can be much more harmonious. It's nice that people are talking about, oh, if we spend $500 or maybe $1,000 to get rid of something, but it's not always that simple. So for people, a lot of the complaints and abatements have been with people that are not well, people that have had heart attacks, people that have been in the hospital. We have this ongoing situation. We're trying really hard. We even paid for a dumpster to go over, but this man is sick. He's a senior. APS has been called. In-home supportive services has been called. He's had three amputations already. We need collaboration. We need to keep this guy alive and we need to just collaborate. So it's not about trying to be a jerk. It's not about not supporting him as a landowner. It's about that we need collaboration. So I'm hoping that we can make that happen. The other thing is that the indication of improvement is something that's really interesting because we have the hearing on the Christian Science Church, which is now in eminent domain process. And hopefully you will talk to the lawyers and agree as a group that the whole abatement of who knows, $85,000, $100,000 could have been handled much different. And we can compromise on that so that we can end up being able to provide some services through the Christian Science Church. But the indication of improvement, there has been improvement on some of these properties, but it's not seen as improvement. So once something is improved, somehow there has to be a way to document what has been improved. We personally, myself and my husband, at our age, took piles and piles of recycled materials to the, to the, to the recycle center and brought back the money for the man that had no.
Thirty seconds.
So, so we just need to remember that collaboration is the, is the answer. Conflict is not the answer. Let's win-win and make this word and work done. And definitely keep record of the improvements along the way because it's not fair to say there's no improvements if there have been improvements and it hasn't been documented. Thank you.
Thank you, Dottie. And next we have 7108. Star six to unmute. There you go. Welcome.
Yes, good morning. This is Bonnie Blackberry. I sent in written comments and I wanted to just focus on the information that's given. And it's really great that the cases on, it's on page 10, were separated by district. I think it's really nice to see how much and what's going on in each district. I'm in District Two and we always have really high numbers. So seeing, but then when you go to the exhibits that show the more detailed information of exactly, you know, it says traditional, well, what does that mean? Well, they have the type of case it is, whether it's solid waste, abandoned vehicles, whatever. So if you want to find out the type of problems that are happening, you have to go through. Well, for the new ones, there's eight pages and there's 11 pages for the closed cases. So going through all of that and trying to figure out, you know, which ones are in which district, I just think if you can separate them by district to come up with the numbers in those charts, you could separate that information in those exhibits by supervisor district. And I think that would benefit each of the supervisors and the public. So again, I'm requesting that. I don't know why that would be so difficult to do. Well, thank you.
Thank you, commenter. And next we have 6655. Star six to unmute. There you go. Welcome.
Hi, thank you so much for taking my call, Mr. Madron and supervisors. And thank you for the report, Planning and Building Department, Director Ford and Karen Mano. This is Nicole Norris. First, I just want to say I agree with you, Mr. Madron, offering a no dumping fee would be such a great idea. I think it'd be wonderful to take away all those barriers for folks who would like to do their best to clean up their property. Otherwise, we're just penalizing people who are poor for being poor. And on that same thread, I think offering, and I've discussed this with you, Director Ford, several times, I think offering a free junk towaway program would be great for the same reasons. And maybe I missed it, but I've not seen any free dumping opportunities in Southern Humboldt where the majority of abatements were given, at least the cannabis abatements. And considering gas prices, it might be nice to see that in Redway and help folks clean up their land. Second, I just have a couple of quick questions about the Yee-Haw Intentional Community in Trinidad. I believe that's the, the community that is being discussed on page four. And I'm wondering what your plan is exactly to resolve the abatement, quote unquote, by other means. As you know, of course, they have a $67,000 lien last I checked, and they're looking at over $100,000 in costs to bring that low-income housing community up to code. And it seems the building code is negating the purpose of their aim to provide affordable housing. And I'd like to know, you know, what the solution is to that. How can we make it more cost-effective to bring these willing property owners, properties up to code to offer affordable housing for people who need it desperately in our community? And also I want to know, page five, I mentioned in your report that you're, something about liens. In three years, you can take on the property if someone doesn't pay that lien. So as far as Yee-Haw's $67,000 or so lien, does that mean that he is at risk of losing that property in three years if he does not pay that and pay the $100,000 or so to bring it up to code? Now moving to cannabis, I'm sorry to be so rushed, I only have three minutes. I just want to say success really depends on what the aim was. If the goal was to prevent environmental degradation and blight in our communities, I argue the cannabis abatement program in particular has exacerbated many of these matters, removing the traditional market of predominantly small legacy farms, has had dire consequences to the entire community, regardless of their involvement in the district. Look at our closed businesses, look at evictions, look at the decimated economy, look at foreclosed land, look at crime rates, unemployment, ACES, suicide rates, overdoses and other deaths of despair. I implore the county to consider ways to rectify the harm caused by this cannabis abatement program that is potentially unconstitutional, according to the Institute for Justice, particularly to District Two and Five. Thank you so much for giving us your time. for Justice, particularly to District 2 and 5. Thank you so much for giving us time to speak.
Thank you. And that's it with the hands up in Zoom. So we'll go to those here today in the audience. Welcome. And this is on the Code Enforcement Annual Report. That's our subject matter. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Steve Madron, my Chair Mike Bone, our Supervisor Michelle Mazzano, Supervisor Martin Wilson, and Supervisor Natalie Arroyo.
Especially those here helping our community to change from a lot of blight and needs of code enforcement to beautiful places that we cherish. Having first memories here in Humboldt County, enjoying driving, seeing the rhododendrons, the daffodils, the beautiful Victorian houses, the modern houses that give positive endorphins, where glancing on properties that may be abandoned simply because people passed and did not have a quality will or trust or special needs trust fund, that working with our attorneys and all of us together as our community, neighbor to neighbor, can best help the people that need extra assistance. I highly compliment John Shelter, our teen and adult challenge people, people of faith that are part of our great Humboldt County. And so I'm hoping that we'll do everything we can to end illegal drug economies and explore more receivership people and continue clean California, people with Adult Protective Services and their crew, and really, our best all-out efforts to save vehicles and places that we need for temporary shelter, and then preserve the small houses and guest houses that may have deteriorated over time, but with the right volunteers and paid people could serve our communities. So thank you for this topic and for the excellent code enforcement report that when Humboldt County does things, they are done very, very well, thanks to our Director John Ford, our code enforcement people, and our best cooperation, place by place, small, medium, and large ways of making our place beautiful. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And with that, Director Ford or staff, would you like to respond to any of the comments or questions?
Yeah, I think we should. In reference to the Yee-Haw, the, there was a desire to allow the property owner to come up with an alternative plan. We've not seen that plan, and it is not really the county's role to develop what that plan is. We've discussed some ideas with the property owner, but that violation is still there, and there hasn't been any movement to resolve it. In terms of the three-year tax liens, I'll remind the board that there are two different kinds of liens that go on against properties. One is for fines and penalties, one is for abatements. It is the abatements that go on the tax rolls. Those are the three-year liens that result in, may result in the property being sold. The fines and penalties go on, are leaned against the property, but they're not on that three-year cycle.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I mean, the advice there is that time is passing, and that is time where one could continue to make very concerted efforts to continue to clean up the property. And as you said, bring forth a plan if there's going to be a plan for some other way to be able to manage all this, that's on the landowner to work with the county to bring that forward. So thank you for that update. I appreciate that, Steve, you brought up John Shelter. He and his crews of homeless individuals do an amazing amount of work all over our communities, in particularly here in Northern Humboldt. I know there are folks in Fortuna also that, and other places, that do an amazing job. And then Aaron Ostrom at Pack Out Green, they organize these trash bashes all over the county on a regular basis. And Scott Bender in McKinleville with the trash bash up there. So I think in each of our communities, there's some amazing people out there doing great work, and we applaud them for that effort. So any final comments from the board before we get a motion and move forward, or a motion and move forward?
I'll make a motion that we receive and file the report, and thank you to staff.
Second. We've got a motion by Supervisor Bushnell and a second by Supervisor Wilson. And I believe we have our vote tabs up.
Sorry, mine's not up.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. I'm trying to make sure that I'm active. Sorry, it's just not popping up.
It's okay. Maybe you have to re-sign in, but I will do roll call.
We'll get two freebies here.
There you go. Supervisor Arroyo.
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0.
Great. And again, thank you to staff for all your hard work on this. Appreciate it. Okay, with that, we're going to go into item number two, I2, I believe it is, and that is to discuss and approve proposed amendments to the Humboldt Waste Management Authority's Joint Powers Agreement. I see we have Tom Mattson in the Zoom, along with Jennifer Weiss, who's been working with him on this. And we also have Eric Kellerman from Humboldt Waste Management Authority here to answer questions or possibly add to the presentation. So with that, Tom, Carrie, take it away.
Good morning, Chairman Madron, members of the board, Tom Mattson, Director Public Works. Apologize for not being there in person today, but I'm a bit under the weather. This amendment, these amendments, this is part of our working group with all the cities in the county, with HWMA, our Joint Powers Authority, to move forward on our SB 1383 organics compliance. They really need flow control of the material before they make heavy financial decisions. We do recommend that. We support these amendments. With that, I will turn it over to Eric for a more detailed presentation. And Eric, myself, Jenny, and our attorney, Destiny Andrews, are all available for any questions after Eric does his presentation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Director Mattson. Welcome, Eric.
How are you?
Flow control. It's all about that, isn't it?
Yeah, thank you. So as Director Mattson alluded to, my name is Eric Keller Heckman. I am the current interim executive director of Humboldt Waste Management Authority, and I wanted to give you a brief presentation about the joint powers amendments. So a little background about HWMA. We are a joint powers authority that was originally formed in 1999 by our member agencies. We are primarily responsible for the management of municipal solid waste and the post-closure maintenance of the Cummings Road landfill. Through that, member agencies designate flow control to HWMA for municipal solid waste only. Due to current legislative mandates, our member agencies have expressed an interest that HWMA lead a regional coordination for organics processing. In order for HWMA to do that, we are seeking flow control of that organic material. For a brief overview of the amendments, the original JPA focused primarily on solid waste management and the Cummings Road landfill, with key areas related to the financial obligations and a singular non-compete provision for recycling services. The proposed amendments include flow controls to expand designated source-separated materials, removal of retired provisions related to the Cummings Road landfill closure, and updates and revisions to current regulations and activities at the Hawthorne Street Transfer Station. The revisions and changes can be classified as two distinct sets. One that focuses on universal changes, such as formatting, spelling, removal of outdated artifacts, clarifying descriptions of current activities. The second is specific changes. This establishes a definition of flow control. It adds definitions for household hazardous wastes. It revises additional member criteria and timing for adding members to the authority. Again, that includes non-member agencies potentially coming to the authority, which will be the cities of Fortuna and the cities of Trinidad. The process for the JPA amendment is currently underway. The first step was taken by the HWMA Board of Directors at their February meeting, where they approved the draft language and directed staff to circulate to member agencies. The next step is member agency approval, and that's why we're here today. Each governing body will review and consider the draft amendments. Additionally, HWMA requires a supermajority, or 70% of its members, to approve the draft language. And finally, the HWMA Board will adopt the amended and restated JPA. After that, the final JPA will be distributed back to its member agencies with a resolution that will designate flow control of organics to HWMA. And with that, I will give it back to county staff for their recommendation. And I would be more than happy as well to answer any questions related.
Thank you, Eric. Director Mattson?
We would just support the board moving forward with staff recommendations and look forward to your discussion and the public input.
Great. Thank you. I want to thank all the members of the JPA and also Jennifer Weiss for your assistance with all of this effort as well. So with that, I'll bring it to the board for any questions, clarifications. Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. Chairman Madron is our rep. I wondered if you could expand on this. I know under member additions, it talks about any city or county being able to join. And I know with, you know, some agencies, we've had interest from tribes in joining. Was that discussed at your meeting, or how? I know that's not the essence of what we're looking at today, but I'm wondering, since you're going through and changing this, if that was covered?
Thank you, Supervisor. Eric, have we had that discussion with the tribes? Can you update us on that?
So we have not had that discussion with the tribes, but because we were reopening the JPA and it is such an extensive process, legal counsel, along with all of our staff at HWMA, we took a very hard look at everything that could be changed or amended to reflect modern-day activities or modern-day landscapes. So that was not specifically placed in there for tribal entry, but it's something that we could discuss. But we wanted to morally broaden and expand the possibilities because we were opening the JPA currently.
Thank you for that. And a lot of this has to do with the new law on organic waste management and, you know, the responsibilities of the various cities and county in terms of doing that. And if not doing it, then fines can be levied, et cetera, which I don't think that's the case for the tribes, per se. They don't have that responsibility. And they basically fit under all of our various systems of collection and processing as well. I know that the city of Trinidad and I believe Fortuna are very interested in joining, and we certainly hope that they will also come to the table and join the JPA because if not, then they could be experiencing some fines possibly and other kinds of things. So it's great to see everybody coming together and working on this as a county. Any other questions from the board? Supervisor Wilson?
It's not just a question. It's just, I mean, it's not a question. It's just a comment on the, I really appreciate the, taking all the all-bolds out of documents like this. I just want to say, so they don't sound like they're yelling at you. And the new definitions are great. And actually, there's a significant amount of cleanup of just using less words, and I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, absolutely. And each one of our member agency staff was also given a draft of this before it went to the HWMA Board for draft language approval as well. So your staff, along with all HWMA member agency staff, was integral in reshaping the current JPA.
And I would say this is a great opportunity to thank Eric in particular, but all of the staff at Humboldt Waste Management Authority. Eric is our current acting executive director and has done an amazing job for us. I mean, there's a lot going on in this arena of organic waste, solid waste, green waste, recycling, CRV. I mean, it's like, there's so much going on. So thank you, Eric. And I also want to thank Supervisor Bone for his years of service on representing our board on the Waste Management Authority for many, many years. So thank you, Supervisor Bone. With that, any other questions from the board?
No, just thank you for the presentation through the chair. And you sat through a lot of board meetings back there, so thank you.
Yeah, that gets an extra badge, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go to public comment. And there are no hands up in Zoom. Yes, there is. Okay, so we have 0150. Star six. There you go. Welcome, Dottie.
So this free dumping thing is a really big deal, but this whole, this whole deal about recycling, I don't understand how we can't get that together faster, but it really needs to be done right away. Can we just get some of those blue trash cans or work out right now? It's just a little bit of money to have that. I don't know if that means that you have to have the black trash can too, or if we could just pay whatever, maybe 50, 100 of those things at $5 or however much they cost, so that they could be collected? I mean, at least it wouldn't be going in the landfill, and it possibly would, the community service districts could maybe collect that money on a bill. I don't know, but throwing a bunch of cans...
Yeah, this is on the JPA agreement, not on all the other services. I apologize if by me bringing up some of those other things triggered that, but we're really just talking about amendments to the JPA. And yes, we have a lot of work to do to discuss those other elements as well, but not here today.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Dottie. Okay, seeing another hands up in Zoom. We'll go to those here in the audience today. If anybody would like to come forward and make any comments, this is your opportunity. Seeing nobody jumping out of their seats back there, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board.
I would make a motion for staff recommendations.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Supervisor Bushnell and a second by Supervisor Wilson to approve the staff recommendation. So we have our tabs up. Did you? Yep. Hey, okay. There we go.
Great. Everything works. So motion passes 5-0.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. It is 12 noon. We have a whole bunch of time sets at 1 o'clock for a closed session, but I believe we can at least get in one more item. I want to give the board an opportunity for a lunch break before we go into what looks like maybe an hour and a half to two-hour closed session, is my estimate, talking to county council and looking at the evals that are on there. So let's go ahead and jump into our next item, which is number three, the storm damage repair to Breslin Thorne Road. And I believe Tom Mattson will also be presenting on this item. Tom, take it away. Director Mattson?
Good morning again, Chairman Madron, members of the board. Generally, this type of item would be on your consent calendar, but due to the financial difficulties with Public Works cash flow and the lack of the detail in the financial section, the county auditor really wanted us to bring this forward with CAO's office in a report format rather than on consent. I believe the county auditor is in your chamber to offer her discussions that we have met and discussed, and we will continue to meet with the CAO and county auditor to discuss our cash flow. Realistically, we're about $5 million in the hole right now, cash-wise, where we have over $11 million in outstanding accounts receivable from FEMA that we are waiting. So while we don't have the cash on hand, we do have the cash coming, and we aren't, you know, digging ourselves into a big general plan hole. And so with that, I would recommend that the board move forward with this project. These are time-sensitive matters with the funding. In order for us to achieve the funding with a very small match of $300,000 plus on a $3 million project, you know, this is one I really would like to move forward on. I would defer to the county auditor if she has any statements to make about us working to get a result, resolve the Public Works cash flow issues.
Great. Thank you, Director Mattson. And Director Dillon? Welcome, Director Dillon.
Good afternoon.
Yes, just about there.
Chairman Madron and members of the board. So part of the reason this item ended up as a departmental was because when it originally came through, it didn't have an in-depth discussion on the negative fund balance in the road fund. And since that time, the... And since that time, the state controller auditors have completed a review of fiscal year 2021 and 2122. They have come up with final fund balances for those years, which were about negative $10 million at the end of 2021 and about 8.8 million negative at the end of 2122. Yesterday, I think it was yesterday. I talked to Tom yesterday, and he provided me the list of the outstanding receivables from FEMA, which totals about 11 million. One of the issues with that is that because those are long-term receivables, they are not allowed per state controller guidelines to be counted in the fund balance. So even if I post those, you put, I don't want to do too much accounting talking, but they get offset as an asset and a liability so that ultimate impact to the fund balance is zero. It doesn't increase it. So with us going into the fiscal year 2324 budget and the negative fund balance, I just have concerns about these type of projects, which are of material dollar value going in before we've actually adopted a 2324 budget. So that's kind of my, and then I believe I will be included in the budget discussions with Public Works, and we will continue to work together. So, you know, these aren't insurmountable issues. I just think that they, I felt the board needed to have more discussion on it than what was originally in the item when I received it.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions, clarifications from the board? Supervisor Wilson?
We're going to have lots of these discussions, it sounds like, coming up real soon, or actually ongoing. But I will say, from my perspective, this has a 10 to 1 match. And so it's, you know, we have to weigh that, I think, in terms of those resources being spent in the community for outside dollars, which will not be available to us from another source. And so for me, I hear the concern on this one. I share the concern, but I think the fact that we're, you know, getting $10 to every $1 we're investing in this particular space, I think it speaks to why I would be supportive of this item.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the chair. Thank you, Cheryl, for the conversation yesterday. It helped clear up a lot in my mind. I agree with Supervisor Wilson that the match is compared, you know, small in amount compared to the value we're getting. And I also am in support of this item, given the fact that we're going to, I think it's a million and a half that's going to be coming from FEMA for this project. 30?
30.
Yeah, so anyways, I am supportive of this project moving forward.
Thank you for that. And seeing no other questions, yes, please, go ahead.
I also, Tom, I'm sorry you're not in the room, but I also had a conversation with Director Mattson yesterday, and I appreciate his frankness and his willingness to, you know, explain everything to me.
Great, thank you very much. Supervisor Wilson?
I think we kind of missed out on the part where this is a repair of a vital, you know, road infrastructure, so I just want to add that too.
Yeah, this is not only important access for Shelter Cove, Breslin, and all that area, but the folks up on Wilder Ridge have no other way out as well sometimes. This is one of those options to get back out of a lot of areas. So we'll take it to public comment at this point. We have one hand up in Zoom, that is 5288. Welcome, there you go.
Nobody here mentioned that part of your legislative platform is to work with the federal government, and I guess that would be Congressman Huffman. To see if FEMA can come up with some kind of avenue to compensate us for our expenses in a more timely manner. Government moves slow. That's probably in your thing. I can't keep up with what your legislative platform. But this seems to be an ongoing problem forever, and I don't know what kind of lobbying you can do to go ahead and fix this problem, hopefully once and for all. Thank you, Maupin, speak.
Thank you for your concise comments. And we'll bring it back here to the room. Anybody here wish to make any comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Wilson?
And I will say that we are in need of some sort of broader planning with relationship to roads in Humboldt County. And we're going to have those conversations more. I think that this brings a certain section of road back to the geometry that it has, or had, I guess. But we may want to be really thinking about how we apply this, literally roads, on the landscape and that technology into the future and what our expectations are with relationship to that landscape. And I'm really kind of referring to our expectations with relationship to road width at all locations throughout the county. Some places are going to be very, very expensive to maintain at what we consider now traditional road widths versus what we may be able to afford in the future and still maintain access. I still support this item moving forward, but I think we really are going to have to have those harder conversations because we do have to provide access, but we also have to not go broke doing it. And so those will be conversations we'll have in the future, but with this, I support this item.
Supervisor Arroyo?
I will go ahead and move staff recommendation on this one, and I do appreciate your input about this item. Auditor Controller Dillonham. And, you know, take that into account, but recognizing that it's critical infrastructure for folks. Second.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Arroyo and a second by Supervisor Bushnell. And we'll go ahead and go to our voting tabs.
Thank you, motion passes 5-0.
Fantastic, okay. And I've been noted, notified by the planning director that the item J1, we could get done in approximately 10 minutes. We'll need to read the ordinance in by the county council. But I'm going to go ahead and move that one up because I believe that number four may take more than 10 minutes. And I want to make sure we have a lunch, and we're going to have closed sessions. So my assumption would be then that the Oak Street and F Street will come back after the closed sessions. So Director Ford, thank you, Auditor Controller Dillonham. So county council, would you please read the ordinance into the record?
Thank you, Chair Madron.
And then we'll open the public hearing after that.
Currently before the board is an ordinance amending section 311-7 of the Humboldt County Code by rezoning property in the Arcata area,
Thank you very much, county council. And so Director Ford, take it away.
Thank you, Chair Madron. I will be extremely brief. This is a lot line adjustment and a zone boundary adjustment, basically to conform the lot lines of a parcel to the land use boundaries of the general plan. Currently, there is a smaller parcel that is approximately 0.9 acres in area. And after the lot line adjustment, it will be 0.24. Parcel B is currently approximately 80 acres, and after the adjustment, it will be 78.5 acres. Like to just now show you on the web GIS what this really looks like. I'm going to share my screen. And so this parcel, this is the larger parcel that we're looking at that's approximately 80 acres currently. And this is the smaller parcel. When I go over to the GIS layer and hit the general plan button, I didn't mean to do that. You can see that the general plan goes and basically draws a square around that. So what this would do is take these, I hope you can see it on there, but there's faint lines. Those are the existing parcel lines. It would basically move this parcel line up to this and square this off consistent with the general plan. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Director Ford. And any questions from the board? Supervisor Wilson?
Can you bring that map back up?
Yes.
It says in this action, this action would rezone approximately 1.5 acres from TPZ to unclassified. Is that, isn't it already unclassified or am I missing? Or is this just, this is the map?
This is the general plan map that we're looking at right now. So if I were to go back over to the zoning map. You can see currently it's zoned U, and the rest of this is all TPZ out in here. And so it would basically take and take that, this small area out of TPZ and put this into U.
And ordinarily, I mean, that's, seems like, it seems like a backwards way to go because we're moving out of U. I mean, that's like the whole point of the last general, well, like a big part of the last general plan was to move everything that we could out of unclassified and, you know, and classify it and put it into zones because that was what the update was all about. So this seems a bit awkward in that regard. Can you address that and what either entitlements or encumbrances come with this particular change?
Yeah, happy to. Thank you for the question. So we've not finished rezoning the property to implement the general plan. We did start that. It got stopped, and we need to pick that up again and finish it. But as I was just, I had the map up that showed the parcel currently would be proposed under the general plan implementation to be changed from U to RA 2.5. So basically, what would happen in this particular case is rather than rezoning just that small parcel, the zoning would be changed to conform to the entire general plan.
Okay.
And so that would be something that the county is going to take on anyway, and it would just be done at that point. It does seem strange to keep the U zone at this point, but I think that we are anticipating the general plan implementation completing the work.
Okay, and so any sort of residential permitting for this under the, under the unclassified, unclassified, is that what you're calling it?
Yeah.
Would then require conditional use permit?
That is correct.
And, okay. And then this, my second question goes, it says, "If the proposal were approved, the ownership entity would then be executing a conservation easement with the City of Arcata to allow portions of the larger parcel to become part of the community forest." But then it says, "It should be noted that this proposal is not associated with the City of Arcata Community Forest." Can you explain what that's about? And I think that the property owner might have something to say about that, but we'll get to that in a minute.
Right, I think the property owner is doing this to make the property into a more permanent design that would allow that parcel, the smaller parcel, to be sold. And then part of their proposal, his proposal, is to dedicate a conservation easement to the City of Arcata. And I'm understanding that he's actively working with the City of Arcata to have that be part of the benefit to the community forest.
And is it feasible for us within this to have that as a finding? Or how would that work? Because right now, it's not necessarily tied together.
I think we could put it in as a finding that that's part of their proposal to do that. I think it'd be very difficult to condition that.
Okay.
Thought about that, and certainly we're restricted in conditioning lot line adjustments to zoning consistency, and certainly that's not a zoning consistency issue.
So through the chair, the property owner is sitting there eagerly.
Yes, that's my next step.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll let you do that.
Let's go ahead and ask the property owner out. Welcome, Mr. Davies.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. This project started for me about three years ago when my wife passed away from cancer. And my children and I kind of envisioned this as a way to sort of honor her, but also reflect back our appreciation. Our property connects to the community forest. We have a private gate into the community forest. It's an incredible asset to the community, but specifically to us as well. And so I'm very far along in my work with the City of Arcata. The city council in Arcata has already approved this. I've already spent north of $80,000 on the surveying and timber work to do restorative NTMP harvest by Marc Andre in alignment with how the city forest, community forest is managed. This project will extend the habitat of the community forest approximately a half mile east, and it's something that feels like really a win-win for everyone. I'm gifting this to the city. There's no monetary exchange whatsoever. And in the survey review of this project and discussions, both with Director Loya in Arcata and Director Ford at the county, this boundary disconnect issue came up where there was going to be this small slice of land that was going to be difficult for the city to manage as part of its conservation easement as it was going to be wedged between the existing parcel and the neighboring parcel, which is how this all sort of came about. The foresters, Marc Andre's group, have finished the NTMP, which has been approved. Again, the city council has already approved this. It's just waiting for Environmental Services in Arcata to finalize their review, and this will complete the conservation easement process. So there's a kind of a deeper connection. The work has been ongoing for more than two years, and we're almost at the end. But happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you for that, and thank you for your work to do a wonderful thing and to honor your sweetheart. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Wilson?
Thanks for that explanation. And after public comment, I'll be happy to make the motion.
Great. And seeing no other questions or clarifications from the board, I'll bring it to the public. We have one hand up in Zoom, 5288, star six to unmute. Welcome. There you go.
I'd like to thank Supervisor Wilson for bringing up a very important question. And I wish somebody would be asking, Planning and Building Director John Ford, is, when will we be able to get these unclassified parcels classified in a process that started probably, what, 20 years ago now? And they should have been classified. In many people's opinion, that should have been taken care of during the general plan process. It wasn't. But we're sitting here waiting, and we have these unclassified things, and we were just sitting here in nowhere land. And that schedule would sometime, agendize it or something. When are we moving forward with the classifications and getting rid of the unclassified zoning so that these are conforming within the county? Thank you, my opportunity to ask this question.
Thank you for that clarifying question. And I think that we'll just, as Director Ford said, that's coming in the near future. So I don't see any other hands up in Zoom. Anybody here in the audience today who would like to make any public comment? This is your opportunity to come forward. And seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with staff recommendation.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Wilson and a second by Supervisor Arroyo. And we'll go ahead and cast our votes on our vote tabs.
Thank you, motion passes 5-0.
Great, thank you very much. And again, yeah, Supervisor, or Director Ford, thank you very much. We have one item left on the agenda, and I know Supervisor Bone would probably love for us to do it, but.
Well, we've had somebody in the audience. I mean, we've moved everything around as to everybody's will, but we've had somebody sitting in the audience for this item, so.
Yeah, any estimate of what you think it might take for this item?
Five minutes, from what I hear.
You think it'll be pretty quick, okay? Then I would.
I don't think this is five minutes. I mean, I have, there are some things I'd like to discuss about this, so.
I understand. I think we're going to go ahead and do this item out of respect for the person that's here in the room. Otherwise, they're coming back three hours from now. So let's see what we can do to be concise with our comments and questions, but do deliberation on this. So this one would be, again, Director Mattson, I believe.
Thank you, Chair Madron, members of the board. Good afternoon, Tom Mattson, Director of Public Works. This, again, was one that was pulled for the prior reason. However, I've heard from several review about your concerns about the big expenditure of county road funds. I'm going to go back a little bit on this. In June 2, 2020, we brought an item to the board to remove parking on F Street near Oak Street for visibility concerns due to the number of crashes at that intersection. We were directed to pull that out of the ordinance, bring the ordinance back without that, and then come back and report. Since that time, we've done community meetings. We've done a warrant analysis for a signal. With it meeting a signal, it also. With it meeting a signal, it also meets a stop sign warrant. However, we do not recommend producing a stop sign here on F Street because that would cause a lot of traffic backup and a lot of diversion to the residential neighborhoods. We also looked at making Oak Street a one-way street, but we believe that would just transfer the, the concerns about the crashes over onto H Street and would not deal with the community concern about the children having crossed the street at an unprotected intersection. It does have a median, however, it does not have a flashing beacon and it has no control. What we came up with, um, through that, looking at the warrants for the, the, the traffic signal is the recommendation to move forward with a traffic signal. We went to a measure Z with a request for funding for about $500,000 because that's usually the average cost for a traffic signal. However, at this location, it turned out there's a lot of difficulty that we didn't foresee with the PG&E transmission lines of no drainage. So we're coming back to you with the recommendation that we move forward because a signal at this location will give a protected crossing for the children. It will provide breaks in the traffic for vehicles coming out of Oak, which are causing the, the crashes. Yes, it is a very significant expenditure, but it's a one-time expenditure on the county road fund. And we do recommend moving forward with this. However, we are open to your direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mattson. And so we'll bring it back to the board for any clarifying questions, comments before we go to the public. Supervisor Wilson?
So I want to, you know, when this came to us under measure Z, I did express concern that there really wasn't a comprehensive look at the entire street scape and structure with relationship to this. Because, you know, this is a de facto through, you know, tra- traffic through Eureka, uh, thir- through, uh, throughput. Sorry. Again, it's like, I'd really like to have some lunch before having this discussion, but, um, and, and in, and when we, when this came to us in 2020 with the relationship to parking and the direction to move forward, it didn't come to us with, or the elimination of parking to create safety. The, the outcome wasn't like, hey, uh, it'll cost you a million dollars to save these parking spots. And that's not how it was proposed to us. It was proposed to us just, you know, that was just one option. The point is, what I'm getting at is that there's a whole lot of options and ways that you can do, uh, traffic calming, the way that you can look at neighborhood safety, both from a traffic and pedestrian perspective. And no real comprehensive look at that was really done. It's just kind of done in, you know, one, looked in one direction, looked in another direction. There's not really, there's not really a comparison with relationship to how these all come together. So I just don't feel like we're, and now the price of this, of this particular piece of infrastructure and technology is significantly more than we had done before. Added to that, we have a huge budget deficit with, associated with our roads. So I'm just saying this, we've kind of moved into this place where not only is this, it's really is about moving traffic. It's not necessarily about, it's about based on neighborhood safety in by itself. And so I think it's just, um, I just don't think it's the wisest decision for us to make at this moment. I think that we should reevaluate some of the options, look at the parking restriction option, look at the options related to pedestrian activated crosswalks, which is something that is in my neighborhood. We use on, on a similarly busy streets. We even use them on highways, looking at all of the other options that are available for technology for making not just this, this location safe with relationship to just this, um, to, to this, uh, crossing, but really the whole street scape entirely. Because ultimately you're just going to, you want to make the whole neighborhood safer, slow everything down and really discourage the idea that this is an alternative route through Eureka. Because again, when we did our general plan update for the, for the county, we made an overriding, thi- this was considered, this was considered, uh, uh, an unavoidable impact due to expansion of, of potential development to the south. And we didn't actually address the issue around what we would do to mitigate this. I, it's just really concerning to me, especially considering the budget considerations moving forward, where we're at and the sort of timeline of decisions that we got to get to this place without a really comprehensive review. That, those are my concerns.
Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you. Um, I have also met with many folks in the neighborhood since my former, you know, Eureka Ward bookended the section of roadway that is managed, owned by the county. So, um, the, you know, the city of Eureka kind of surrounds on either end, um, this stretch of roadway. And I'm aware of the concerns at the intersection. And had this been a $500,000 project, which is in line with most lights, I would feel, um, great moving forward, but the extra almost $800,000 at this moment in time makes me, and, and conversation with some of the slow the F Street down advocates who have been working on this for years and who helped precipitate this in the first place. That there's not universal agreement that at that cost, that this is the right solution. And I, I think the pedestrian activated lighting beacon, um, you know, considering the parking restrictions again. You know, I, I know it's for the safety of schoolchildren and their, their caregivers and teachers. But if that's, you know, really, um, the, the, the focus of this, which I believe it is, then I do think that people will be willing to consider for the safety of children. You know, perhaps looking at eliminating parking spots at an intersection to increase the visibility. So I, I would like to see us analyze a few other alternatives before we allocate $800,000 to something that is somewhat discretionary. I realize it meets the warrants, but when this came forward, um, initially as a proposal for measure Z, um, it was not qualifying for the Highway Safety Improvement Program funding that goes to communities because it didn't meet the benefit to cost ratio for that funding program. So, um, I just was reviewing that and thinking, um, you know, it's, it's really about utility realignment that the $800,000 cost comes from. And at that cost, I do think we should be talking with the community again to ensure that this is the right use of $1.2 million and talking with the city frankly, about what the strategies are for that whole corridor. Because the city has done projects at the golf course with a new improved crossing and in Henderson Center to slow traffic on F Street and E Street and all around that area to improve, you know, crossing and safety for pedestrians. But we haven't talked with them in a long time, to my knowledge. I mean, I talked to, um, city staff as well to prepare for this. And it just, I think, I'm not opposed to considering this. I just would like to consider other options and make sure that that's the right fit for, um, this large investment on, uh, and, you know, I just don't frankly feel like it's been analyzed. It's been analyzed, like, can, does this meet the warrant for the light? Yes. And are there wrecks there? Yes. But how, have we looked at other alternatives? I, I frankly don't think so. If we have, I haven't been part of that conversation and I have been working with the same neighborhood for, for years. So, um, I know people want it and are kind of fixated on the idea of a light. But I do think there are other alternatives and some of the neighbors that live right in that neighborhood who've been paying close attention to this for a long time have some other ideas as well. So I just think it's worth, um, slowing down and just making sure before we proceed with this kind of allocation.
Great. Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell.
Um, thank you. Through the chair, Director Mattson, when I spoke to you yesterday about this project, there had been a, a community involvement and, um, alternatives thought about. Can you, um, go into detail about those, please?
Well, we have had community meetings out there and, you know, this was called out actually in a walkability audit that we did in the local area. We certainly didn't look at the entire stretch as a future, uh, option. So I know there's a couple of people who don't like it, um, but it does meet the warrants and it solves all of the problems. If you want us to go back and come back with a, a more of a compilation of what the history is and get more feedback, we can do that. But we know that this is a solution for the problems at that intersection. It is a very expensive solution, but it is a solution.
Thank you. Does, um, are there any problems with revisiting the, the parking spaces? I think you had, you and I had talked about that yesterday. And also are there any problems, um, considering that we, do we did a, I believe we did a study and identified that, um, there's an issue here. Are there any problems with waiting or going away from this?
Um, I'm, you know, once I've identified a problem and I'm working towards a solution, I need to continually work toward that solution. So if we need to take time, then I would return to the board with an ordinance, again, requesting the elimination of parking to open up that visibility.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay. Yes. Supervisor Wilson?
And I just would note that this is 100% to be paid for by, there's no match with relationship that I know of. And one of the reasons I think there's no match for this is because it doesn't, it may meet the technical warrants of, with relationship to a light. It doesn't mean that it's the best option. And the rea- one of the reasons there's probably no matches for this is because it probably doesn't qualify for, for external funding. And so that should signal to us a little bit about, you know, is it the most appropriate option? And where we just approved, um, road funds that has almost a 10 to one match, this has no match. And it, and so we have to be wise about, uh, how we spend our money, where we apply. I mean, and maybe even if we could wait, if this is something that we think is, that we could get funds for, maybe Tom, you could address this. I mean, what programs might be applicable to help us with the cost of this, um, of this expenditure?
Well, I can tell you, it certainly will not qualify for a highway safety improvement program funds in this day and age. A number of years ago, that fund source cut funding signals to 50% of the total project cost. And it has to be in the competitive. Back when I started with the county, the competitive BC was about 3.5. Now it is 18. We get a lot of money for striping and rural roads out of that program because we have a very high BC. Does not mean that this does not need to be done or something does not need, need to be done at this intersection. The other source of funding would be through the, uh, through HCOG. But most of that funding is put out a number of years because we've dedicated the vast majority over the last decade to Caltrans for the Arcata Eureka project. So if I was to apply for it there, probably 10 years out the window and we still would have to do something in the interim.
And have there been other ideas about how to discourage and slow down traffic through this corridor? In, in a way that, you know, keeps people from thinking of it as an alternative route through the city of Eureka?
Uh, if you go to the prior general plan, this was actually laid out as a one-way road couplet with E Street as a main entrance exit into the city of Eureka. The question is, where do you want the traffic to go? We could look at different things. If you want us to step back, we can certainly meet with the city and look at different things. But again, we've identified a problem here. We've worked towards trying to get the funding for it. And we'll move whatever direction you, you want us to. If you don't want me to move on the signal right now, I certainly will come back with some alternatives. But I need to, I need, I need to do something at that intersection.
Through the chair, I agree with you. I think it's not just the intersection, but the entire street is, is a safety issue for sure. I mean, there's no doubt about it. There's no doubt about the fact that, um, that neighborhood is impacted by traffic. And so the, the question is, is like, is this the best technology, the best solution? And, and considering the cost as well. I mean, it's, it's not, we, we aren't completely made of money these days. We're having some issues about that. And so what are the opportunities for matches and those sorts of things? I appreciate the discussion, Tom, and I'm happy to move forward or not.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Um, thank you. Through the chair, Director Mattson, have we, um, asked the city of Eureka if they would be willing to partner?
Uh, not, not officially, since it's not in the jurisdiction. Usually where we partner is where we have shared streets that have one half and we have one half or at a shared intersection like Walnut and Hemlock.
Okay. So we haven't officially made a request?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Arroyo, are you indicating that this is a shared intersection?
I, it's a, a couple of blocks from city limits. Um, but it's, uh, I think what I, what I understand director, what I was reacting to is I understood Director Mattson to be talking about where we share one half and the, the city shares the other half of the street. But since this is bookended by city streets, I do, I, I personally think of it as a street that we both are responsible for managing traffic flow and, um, you know, uh, safety and vehicle behavior and, um, ability for pedestrians and bikes to access it. So I, I see it as a shared road, but maybe in a different way than Director Mattson does.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else at the board before I go to public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to the Zoom, which is empty. So that's easy. And so for those here in the audience today, this is an opportunity to come forward and speak if you would like to do so. And we do have one speaker. Welcome. You've got three minutes.
Uh, all right. Most of you know me. Um, I am wondering, uh, I came in kind of on the end of this because I'm on jury duty today.
Excuse me. I don't know you. I'd love to know your name.
I'm Althea. I emailed you guys this morning on a different matter.
Thank you, Althea.
Hi. Um, I am wondering if the cost of a typical traffic signal is too much? If, um, eliminating what we call the beg button, the push to, to walk button, might reduce that cost? If the lights and the pedestrian signals are just on a timer so that every time the light cycle, the pedestrian signal comes on without anyone having to do it? If that's still too much, I would beg you guys to go with a hawk signal, which actually flashes a red light because people actually stop for red lights. The rectangular flashing yellow lights that we see in crosswalks, lots of people do not stop for. I'm happy to show you guys, we can take a walk around town and you'll see how many people don't pay attention or don't think they have to stop. I still can't find out legally if they're actually legally obligated to stop for those. So that's my comment on this.
Thank you for that. I do know that part of the increased cost is, uh, anytime we're moving PG&E poles these days, the costs have skyrocketed dramatically. I'm experiencing that in my district. Supervisor Bone?
Well, the inevitable I can see here. Um, yeah, there were community meetings. I, we did have city representatives from Public Works from the city. And there was a big push for this and warrants are accidents. So if we deny this, I think we heard Director Mattson, this is the one way we can fix the problem. Three years ago, we weren't in this financial position. First meeting was in February of 2020, first neighborhood meeting we had, um, just before COVID. And we've had many meetings after that and we talked about taking parking away. We looked at all the options. What leads to this is, and I, the city of Eureka was asked at that meeting, would they want to participate in this as it's not our, you know, even though their state limits lines, I think it's about 55, 60 feet away from this intersection. The, the, the problem arises is when you come into town is approximately 35 years ago, we put a traffic light up for Kmart. Then we go down the road a little bit. We've got one now, a new one in, in and out. We've got a new one at Hawthorne. We have a pedestrian crossing. I don't know where it's at, by the theater. And what it has done, it is up the traffic on F Street about 30, 35% according to the traffic counts, I think is what we saw. I drive F Street every day. I appreciate everybody knows so much about, but I drive it every day. I go through Oak and F every day. Sometimes I'm delayed there for up to 90 seconds because I can't get out onto F. So what that does mean is somebody tries to shoot out across. The other problem we have is quite a, there is quite a few kids that cross there. I actually took my TB test and did all my background checks so I could be a school crossing guard, but they couldn't get it. It, it was hard to organize getting a school crossing guard at F Street. They did a safe routes to school program there and put a medium in the middle of the road so the kids could run to that for safety and then run across when the cars weren't coming the other way. But on the one end of it, there's about four inches of mud, so the kids can't even start there. So it's, it's completely null and void. So it's, it's completely null and void. After three years, and I was really excited for my district to get some Measure Z money, but I see that going away. So, you know, I can, if we vote on this, I can, I mean, I can see how the vote's going. I fully support this. Why is there no match or grants? Did we apply for any? That's the question. Did we apply for any grant money? Did we go to Caltrans? Did we go to the city? Did we go to, because you have to understand, all those people, and a lot of them are city, a lot of Lombard Hill residents, our city of Eureka residents, that now go through our intersection to come to town to work and shop. That's, you know, they go to Target, they go to Costco, they go to all Winco, they go to all the places that gives them that extra sales tax. Maybe they do want to participate for the safety of the children at the school. But it's not that. I made a promise to a lady whose daughter was in a rollover there, that we would do something about that intersection. And again, I can't remember her name, but I just want you to know, what we're going to do is we're going to study it some more. We're not going to do anything about it. We're going to study it some more. So when there is a traffic accident at that intersection, I'm going to vote to put a stoplight there. Do I think a stoplight, the answer, no. Do I want to study all of F Street? I don't know. Some of those don't even have alley access, so I don't know where you're going to put the cars. We have parking on there. That's a pretty good road. When you take a look at the amount of accidents that happen on F Street, that's where the majority of the accidents happen, and it's a pretty long street. So, I mean, we can, we can slow the traffic everywhere else. But if they can't get onto it, they're going to make bad decisions to try, this is the biggest opening I have. So there's multiple housing units on the corner. We did go red a little ways back. We've walked it three times with Public Works. We've had public meetings. I mean, I can, I didn't think I would have to fill this place with people that said we have to do something. I could have brought a lot of parents whose kids go to Grant School, and they could have asked the question. But as somebody who travels it every day and has tried to figure out any way possible, because to the south, to the south, it's a road that's wider than most roads in Humboldt County. It narrows down heading west, I guess that'd be, so, I mean, but people have learned to drive, they're responsible, there's, there's businesses along there, there's a grocery store, Andy Market along there, but very few accidents till you get to Oak and F. And that's where we put a congregation of children. So, and the parents are great, they walk down there, the teachers go down on their own time and get them across. But we have a problem intersection. We have a problem with money. So the safety of the children and the safety of the motoring public, and be damned, motoring public is the worst thing in the world, I understand that, but we still have the problem. And it's going to be a problem if they're walking, they're riding a bike, if they're riding a drone, we're still going to have a problem there. And we can study it. And is there match monies? No. But I will be the vote that says, I think we should move forward on that. And I make a motion that we accept this staff's recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I have some questions before, or do you want to see if there's a second?
If there is a second, we can continue to discuss. If not, we can pull the motion and continue to discuss. We end up in the same place.
I have some questions.
Please go ahead.
Director Matson, I'm wondering if, given the concerns you've heard from this board today, if there's an opportunity to continue this item and investigate whether the city of Eureka would be interested in helping financially, and whether there are any monies that we could get for this project, or if application, grant applications have been applied for. So I'm wondering if we can continue to, so that we can investigate some options.
Well, we can always continue. I can ask the city, but I can tell you that they're doing a paving project on F Street, and they're ending before the county line, and they want me to pay for the end to get to the county, and I don't have money for that. So I don't have much hope of asking the city. Looking for other funding options, the HCP is the most likely, and as I said, this does not have a high enough BC to make it, and that funding cycle is two years off. I can apply for different things in that cycle, like the crossing beacons, the flashing beacons, et cetera, but not a real signal that is the solution for this intersection.
Okay, thank you. Would the amender, or would the motion maker, could I amend that we continue to come and have it come back, say within, Director Matson, do you think a month would be sufficient time to find the answers out?
I could come back with something, some alternatives in a month.
Would the motion maker be okay with that?
Well, there is no motion. It wasn't seconded. But I understand what you're doing.
Oh, okay. Well, then I'm going to make a motion that we continue this item to investigate funding solutions, to ask the city of Eureka. I understand, you know, that it's a little bit outside of the jurisdiction of Eureka, but it is within the sphere for sure. I think they just passed a measure for safety. Maybe there's some funding, new funding source there. But, so my motion would be that we continue this item to see if we can find some alternative for funding.
We have a motion, any second?
Question with relationship to the motion, is it just looking for alternatives for funding, or is it actually looking at potentially alternatives for options to address the, the street and/or the, the intersection?
So I think the motion would be all of that, anything to make this area safer. I think the light has already been investigated and would work, and if we could find some funding sources for that, I, I think this board may be more comfortable. And then also, if Director Matson, if that doesn't work, then that motion would include, you know, other options to make this, this section safe.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Bushnell, and a second by Supervisor Wilson to continue this item, to give Director Matson an opportunity to look for other possible funding sources or partners, as well as other options to help make this road safe. Is that concise enough for you? Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. I, I would be interested in, I'm not saying that I never want to see a light here by any means. I just, I will tell you, I have not been privy to the information. You know, F Street continues into my district, pretty far from F and Oak, but still. And I, what I have been privy to is a lot of input from the community about traffic calming all along F Street. And what I've heard time and time again from transportation engineers in my community and people that do this work for a living, people who are experts, is that stop signs and traffic signals are traffic control devices. They do, to some degree, slow traffic, but not, they're primarily traffic control devices and not traffic calming devices. And what the community has been clamoring for is slowing traffic on F Street. So there are different strategies for slowing traffic sometimes than there are for traffic control. So I would love to see an analysis of some other options. And to the public commentators, questions and points, the additional cost of $800,000, making this a $1.2 million project funded from our road fund, is, is partly due to those utilities and not due to the cost of the signal. I think the, the cost of the actual signal itself and all the apparatus usually associated with that would be covered by the Measure Z funds, but then there was this surprise cost on top of that. And we actually don't know, this, this item was just to put it out for bid. So we don't know if it would have come back even higher. So I would just like to see an analysis of the hawk potentially, and whether that's an option, and, and to discuss with the city of Eureka a little bit more about how we're going to treat this whole roadway, which the county's part is in the, sandwiched in the middle of. So I, I know I haven't been a part of a lot of those conversations in the past, and, you know, it was, it was staff, and, you know, I met with a lot of the community members, and with staff, and with Supervisor Bone, I think one time during the pandemic over Zoom where we all met together. Otherwise, I've been having separate conversations. So I just don't think that there's been the communication about alternatives that I would like to see. And I am happy to participate in those conversations and to, if, if folks feel it's appropriate for us to both participate in those conversations and hear more. If you have something to say, please, please go ahead. That's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Arroyo, yeah, it seems to me that the traffic calming is primarily in the city's jurisdiction, right? Most of the length of F Street is in the city. So we really do need to have a partnership on this to be looking at the bigger picture. Well, we've had a good discussion. It is almost 10 minutes till 1:00. We're going to need to do the initial closed session items starting at 1:00. We have outside counsel. That may take us an hour or so for those items. Just a second.
Those items should take anywhere from, I would say, 30 to 45 minutes.
Okay. And then after that, we have two evals that could be pushed back a little further because this board does need a break to be able to revive itself with some food and some time off. So at this point, we have a motion and a second on the table. We'll go ahead and vote on that measure unless there is any final comments. Supervisor Wilson?
I just wanted to thank the member of the public that is going to jury duty. Thank you so much.
Okay, so we have our voting tabs up. We'll go ahead and vote on the motion in front of us.
Thank you. Motion passes four to one.
Okay, thank you for that. And at this point, we'll read the closed session items, and we've got to take, nope. We have to read them at 1:00.
We have to read them at 1:00.
Okay, so 10-minute break, get some nourishment as best you can. We'll be back here in 10 minutes to read the closed session into the record, go right into closed session after that, and then we'll take another break between that and the evals. Is that agreeable, CAO for the eval process? Yep, okay. We are in recess. Always ready. And we are back out of recess to read into the record the closed session items.
Thank you, Chair Madron. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D1, in order to discuss existing litigation in the cases of Pamela Gerose, executor of the estate of John R. Braun versus County of Humboldt, case number 4:18-CV-7383-SBA, and Alan D. McCloskey et al. versus Humboldt County Sheriff et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2300395. It is also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.8, to grant authority to its negotiators regarding the price and terms of payment for the purchase of real properties located at 3007 I Street, Eureka, California, 95501, Assessor Parcel Number 011-063-001, and 3015 I Street, Eureka, California, 95501, Assessor Parcel Number 0-11-063-006. The county negotiators are identified as Department of Health and Human Services Director Connie Beck, and Deputy Director of Facility Management Sean Meehan. The parties with whom the county may negotiate are identified as Scott Pesh, broker slash owner of Coldwell Banker Commercial Pacific Partners. And finally, it is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Sections 54954.5 and 54957, in order to consider the public employee performance evaluations for the positions of the Aviation Director and the Clerk of the Board.
Thank you, County Counsel. And so we'll go to public comment. We have one hand up in the Zoom, 5288. This is your chance for comment. Welcome.
Ken Stowatsky, the autism in me sometimes gets the best of me. I saw the Alan D. McCloskey wanted to find out what it was about. So I Googled that, and I came up with a, something that was put out there. Former supervisor candidate Alan McCloskey suspect in multiple burglaries, sheriff's office says. Now, all I can do is kind of assume maybe that's what it is. Hopefully, it's the same person. So anyway, the article here was a press relief, basically dating back to October 29, 2021, at 7:38. Deputies arrived at a residence, they found a trailer, it had been stolen early in the morning for construction business. While outside the residence, deputies also located numerous items which appeared to have been stolen. The resident deputy contacted and detained 39-year-old Alan Don McCloskey. Based upon their investigation, they basically got a, a search warrant and found $6,000 worth of lumber, other construction items, and then $2,400 worth of decorative trees, which were confirmed to have been stolen from McKinleyville Golf Course, burglary tools, two loaded firearms and ammunition. And Mr. McCloskey, according to this, was booked into the county jail, possession of a stolen vehicle, possession of stolen property, convicted felon in possession of a firearm, and a person prohibited in possession of ammunition. So I assume if this is the same person, that you basically do whatever you can, an anti-slap suit, or even though not being attorney, I would love to go ahead and have input and, or enjoy the preparation of a deposition of someone who's complaining and coming from this particular lifestyle, I guess you'd call it. And if this person is the correct person that's suing the city at all, I don't know who's hanging with him there. But I highly recommend that you use competent counsel and fight this one to the end. I doubt whether he can afford to have, have any kind of counsel himself, so he's probably improper. We'll see how that goes. Thank you for my opportunity. And I did want to mention risk management a little bit here. That's what you do all the time on your last decision there. I hope you didn't put yourselves at jeopardy by not handling a problem that was being addressed by your Public Works, and you'll be in litigation in the future on that one. Should an accident happen in the meantime, time is of the essence. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Speaker. And no other hands in Zoom. Anybody here in the audience today that would like to speak? Seeing none, we are going to recess, and we will be back. Our estimated time is 2:30, 3:00, somewhere in there. So we are in recess. All right, we are back from our recess. And County Counsel, do we have any actions to report?
Yes, Chair Madron. There was no reportable action taken with regard to items L1, L3, L4, and L5. With regard to item L2, the board voted for 1, with Supervisor Arroyo voting yes, Supervisor Wilson voting yes, Chair Madron voting yes, Supervisor Bone voting no, and Supervisor Bushnell voting yes, to authorize the risk manager to enter into an agreement with the Mitchell Law Firm for defense of the case of Alan D. McCloskey et al. versus Humboldt County Sheriff et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2300395.
Thank you very much, Counsel. And with that, we are adjourned.